I sent you a note, never mind. Can you email me the roadmap again?
Yeah.
And I want the Bill Heritage Motion. The email motion, I'm going to amend.
Is that in the mail?
Yeah. I need the County Shirley Second Motion. You guys know that I'm actually sitting next to Rick.
Oh, look at that.
Well, it's kind of because... Will you spark the IC too?
No.
How come the nominee for the report wasn't nominated within our package? Yeah. He's blast vote. Like right now, I have one vote to give. You know, last week, last vote. No. I want the motion I put in last night, consolidate one. The other one is the seconded by these. I also think that this one is seconded by those. I need the one that was nominated last night. But there is a delay. Now, I'm not wanting to second these. So I have to send out those one hundred and fifty to say.
Oh my God.
Hi. Yeah. Yes, yes, I can. I have a lot of questions. I'm trying to answer them. I'm calling on the staff to go over. I'm calling out the night only. They might just watch on the back. That's not fair. Here you go. How good is it? Oh, we like Luis Santos? That's not fair. Here you go. Oh, we like Luis Santos?
Testing one, two.
Testing French. Testing English, English. English, one, two, three. One, two, three, English, English, one, two, three. English, 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 awesome.
What's up? Shirley motion from last night. Late last night, needs to be settled.
Oh, that's the other way.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Allen. You said that after you presented. That's why I think that was first though.
It needs to go with the delegation of the board of directors. It actually says amend the board of directors. You'd be amending it.
Are they actually?
And once this is revised, can we have this on screen or something? Yes, you may.
Yes, you.
One, two. So you were working on the... I'm just doing that. I'm trying to get the information.
I'm organizing myself. Why is podium there? Oh.
I'm saying if I got a lot of... I think that would say it's not that you can...
Um, yes, no, it's... What is going on?
That's not... How do you... That's it in January. That's in January. No, it's...
Oh, my God, it was like... Okay, so everybody's off their rockers. A hundred percent.
Also, please don't say the motion was...
Oh.
Do we have... I lost inquiry, I also didn't see that this morning. I didn't see that in my package. What we need, keep doing optional for there. We don't really get into it, what we're calling for a lie, a false report. Hey, Councilor. Can you move a technical amendment for me, please? All it does is change the built heritage citizen members code of conduct such that their gift threshold will match whatever council's is. Bless you, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Barbara.
Hello, Tim.
Matt? So you can't even have podium away?
Oh, we got a new...
Yeah, it's a specialty, plus Sarah O'Neil.
Yeah, it's a specialty, most terrible meal.
Welcome to the special meeting.
Welcome to the special meeting for December 3rd.
City council meeting. In fact, it's special for two reasons. One, because it's out of the normal cycle as we always do after an election. But secondly, it's special for all of our members of council, both new and returning. This is our first meeting together. And I want to thank all of you very much for really a special evening on Monday night and to thank our clerk, deputy clerk, and protocol office for putting together what I hope you all agree was a very special evening for our family, friends, and constituents as we were sworn in at Centerpoint Theatre. And of course, the volunteers at Centerpoint made us feel very, very welcome. So a big thank you, Mr. Clerk. I know this was part of your responsibility along with the deputy clerk and Cathy Bowles and all of the men and women who made that evening so special, from the singers to the honour guard, to the justice of the peace, and to Reverend Bailey. Alors, merci beaucoup à toutes les personnes qui sont responsables.
Thank you to all people responsible for this very special event for all city councillors.
Well, too, both at council and in the audience, could you please rise for prayer? Almighty God, let us work together to serve all our people. Dieu te puissant, aidez-nous à travailler ensemble afin de bien servir nos citoyens. And as it's a special meeting, we do not have au Canada. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Concierge Manette.
Present.
Councillor Midic.
Present.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Elshantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egli.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Concierge Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Newsbaum.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Here.
Councillor Leeper.
Present.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chenushenko.
Present.
Concierge Clutier.
Present.
Concierge Blay.
Present.
Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
I'm back.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
Look, could I make ten minutes longer?
Merci. Declaration of interest, including those arising from prior meetings. Déclaration de conflit d'intérêt y compris.
Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings.
No communications filed to date, regrets, absence, no regrets filed. Motion to introduce reports. Motion important presentation de rapport. Councillors Shirelli and Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
It's moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Fleury, that the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled 2014-2018 Council Governance Review be received and considered.
On the motion, carried. Carried, adopté. Item number one is 2014-2018 Council Governance Review. Examen de la structure de gestion publique du Conseil municipal pour 2014-2018. And thanks to our clerk's office, we do have a roadmap, and we'll go page by page through the roadmap. And if members of council would like to hold a particular item when we get to that page, if they would notify me by pressing their button. And we'll go through consent items first, then back to the roadmap where we have motions and where people have asked that items have been held. Does anyone have any questions on the process? Concierge Fleury.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to give the pages of the report when we do the roadmap? Otherwise, it's too hard to follow. Well, the pages are on the roadmap. Oh, okay, thanks.
One, we have two technical amendments, Councillor Elshantiri and Deans, if you'd like to introduce those amendments. The first one is with Invest Ottawa and the AODA. I believe it's Councillor Elshantiri. If we can put that up on the screen there.
Can you lift it up a little bit? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the motion is on the front view. If you'd like me, I can read it. But if therefore be resolved that Part 1, Section A, Recommendation 16, that mayor appointment to the board of Invest Ottawa be added to their list, afford or position specific appointment as described in Document 4, and B, further resolve that Part 4, Recommendation 3, an amendment be included, such as the city clerk and solicitor be delegated authority to sign Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act 2005 Compliance Report and other required reports for filing with the designated provincial authority under Schedule A, Section 62 of the delegation's authority by law as required by the Act and keeping with the current practice. Seconded by Councillor Deans.
Thank you, Councillor Elshantiri. So to confirm, Mr. Kirkpatrick, this is a technical in nature omission on these two items, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. Are there any questions on Councillor Elshantiri's motion, seconded by Councillor Deans? On the motion as presented? Carried, thank you. The second item is Councillor Harder, seconded by Councillor Moffett. Councillor Harder, if you'd like to introduce your motion, another technical amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has to do with the Built Heritage Subcommittee, and it's just a technical amendment to modify the version of the Code of Conduct for members of that committee, which is recommended to be in line with council, which would include a $30 disclosure threshold for gifts and hospitality, or whatever that level ends up being at the end of this meeting.
So the reason, thank you, Councillor Harder, the reason this is before us is that we do have some members who wish to raise the issue of the threshold. So what this does is whatever we decide for council will be mirrored by the Built Heritage Subcommittee. So on the motion? Carried. Thank you, Councillor Harder and Moffett. I understand, Councillor Leeper, you'd like to hold item F. Is that correct? Does anyone else wish to hold anything else other than item F on page one? This is Standing Committee Subcommittee's and Transit Commission. Councillor McKenney?
I would hold the issue of the Community Services Advisory Committee.
No, it comes up a little later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Fleury?
Could we ask questions now? Yes, of course. That's just for suggestions on page one.
Sorry, I just wanted to be clear. If you want to hold it, we'll hold it. We'll come back. So item E?
Item E.
Okay.
And item F, just two quick questions.
Yeah, F is already held. Okay. Anyone else want to hold anything else on this item? Well, I think for sake of clarity, we'll just hold the whole item number one and then come back to that, so we won't pass anything on that point. So we'll do that and go right up to Transportation Committee on page two. Okay? So we'll come back to that item. Next is page two, except items G and H at the top. We have no amendments or motions. Does anyone have any issues with items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6? Okay, on page two, items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, carried? Carried. Item 3, items 7, 8, 9, and 10. I have no amendments or motions on these items. Does anyone have any issues they'd like to hold? Okay, on page 3, as presented? Carried. Page 4, items 11 through 18. We have one item by Councillor Deans and McKenney. Refer CPS, OTC, and EC schedule to the appropriate committee, so we'll come back to that.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'll have a question on item 13 as well.
Okay. And then item 18, we have Councillor Moffett and Elshantiri with respect to rural development charge issues going to ARAC, so we'll come back to that. Does anyone have any other items on page 4? Councillor Brockington?
Mr. Mayor, does this include item 14? Chairs and vice chairs be appointed for the term of service?
Yes.
I'd like to hold that item, please.
Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, so we'll come back to page 4. Page 5, Councillor McKenney, this is the item dealing with the Community Services Advisor, so you'd like me to hold that? No, we'll come back to it, I think it's easier that way. Also, we have Standing Committee changes and updates, Councillors Shirelli and Deans, so we'll hold that. And tax and support rate of budget process, we have Brockington, Kakish, and Leeper, Shirelli, so we'll hold that. Does anyone else wish to have any other item held on page 5? Okay. Catherine is B, number 1. Okay, page 6, accountability and transparency, items 1 to 5. Does anyone wish to hold any of those items? So on pages, page 6, items 1 to 5, carried? Number 4. Councillor Deans wants to hold number 4 about doing a report. Oh, okay. Councillor Deans wishes to hold number 3. Anything else on any of the other items on page 6? Okay. Page 7, items number 6, 7, and 8.
I'd like to hold item 7, please.
Any other items on page 7? No, okay, so we'll come back to page 7. Page 8, Part 3, Local Boards, items number 1 to 5. Does anyone wish to hold any item on page 8?
Just a question.
Okay, is it a brief question, councillor, or is it more detailed?
It's about the selection of those committee members.
Okay, who would you like to ask that of?
In relation to B. So in the report, it speaks of the Built Heritage Subcommittee and the membership there?
Correct.
And then we, it wasn't clear in the report what we planned to do, so the current members are bridged, and there will be a nomination process for the advisory committees. It's unclear if the same members can reapply.
Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Mayor, for Built Heritage Subcommittee staff are recommending that the current members continue on because they were such a short period of time, and they've all agreed. So we would go through the recruitment and selection panels for all the other ones, but not for Built Heritage should council decide that today.
I guess my question applies to the remainder, so some of the advisory committees, some of the membership feel the same way as the Built Heritage Committee. So how do we, how can we bridge that process for them as well?
We would encourage them, Mr. Mayor, to all reapply, and we've actually had some of those discussions, so yes.
Yeah, they're permitted to reapply. Okay. Okay, so on page 8, as presented? Carried. Page 9, item 6 from the previous page, plus amendments to various bylaws, policies, and related matters. There's an amendment by Councillor Shirelli and Deans, so we'll come back to that. Does anyone else wish to have any other item on?
I'll have a question on item number 3.
Item number 3. Well, we're holding that anyways.
Okay, perfect.
Does anyone else have, Councillor Moffett?
I just have a question on item 7.
7, okay. Anything else on any of the other items? Okay, so we'll come back to that page. And page 10, we have item number 4, Recommendation amended motion by Councillors Egli and Cadri and Councillors Shirelli and Elshantiri, so we'll come back to that. Does anyone wish to raise any of the other items on the page?
I have a quick question about item number 1, the deputy mayor positions.
Anything else on that page? Page 11, we have item 7, Councillor Shirelli and Hubley. And then we'll have a motion for nominating committee, so we'll come back to that. Does anyone else wish to raise any other item on page 11? Okay, all right. So we have finished off most of page 1, but we have two requests for holds. Item number E is Concierge Fleury, I believe, on Finance and Economic Development Committee and its associated subcommittees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question on the debenture process. I understand very well the process, but there seem to be... Well, it is up to council to make a decision following various procedures, but it's not clear. It says one or several members of the committee. Will these people be identified, the people responsible for the decision-making? I suppose it should be the city manager or the treasurer?
For that, who will speak? I don't know if it's the treasurer.
It's actually either the committee, Fedco, or council can approve the debenture bylaw. That is the change. So in essence, we're keeping the timelines the same, which is 48 hours notice, and we think that having three meetings a month essentially will give the treasurer the opportunity to take advantage of the timing that she needs to. Also, if we do need to, and the treasurer, we have discussed this with the treasurer, if she needs a Subcommittee meeting in the summer or a committee meeting in the summer to pass a bylaw, it is much easier to get quorum of a committee of council than to get council for a special meeting to pass a bylaw. So what will happen, the only real change you're going to see is that Fedco will, for the debenture, when there is a debenture bylaw on, have the ability to actually pass a bylaw.
I guess my question wasn't, thank you for that, that's what I understood of it. I think that there's just a little portion, I'll read it in French, and maybe you can clarify it. It says...
Currently, the city and its system has authorized one or several members of the debenture committee to take necessary action. When we say one or several, is it an executive decision that was made?
They've already made the decisions for the project, and they've already made the decisions about that they will be funded by debt.
Thank you. Merci, concierge. Councillor Leeper on item F?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On pages 33 and 34 of the governance report, there are protocols that have been listed with respect to when a motion may rise the next day to council from Planning Committee. As you know, the practice, the occasional practice of bringing something to Planning Committee, sorry, to council the next day sometimes causes concern in the community. In the third part of these protocols, there are four conditions under which it's been recommended that something could rise the next day. The first two, points A and B are relatively uncontroversial. Point C, that a significant project needs council approval to ensure critical timelines are met, and particularly bullet D, committee considers it necessary given the particular circumstances of a project or policy, are fairly widely worded, particularly point D. I'm wondering if staff can provide me some clarification with respect to the kinds of cases in which the justification for bringing something to council the next day, committee considers it necessary given the particular circumstances of a project or policy, might be invoked to bring something. I've heard this concern in the community.
Your worship, an example of where something may be, like, sorry, item number D, maybe a situation where there's an application in front of committee, it's not controversial, board council supports it, community supports it, there may be a building permit pending, waiting for that small zoning amendment to, you know, to issue the building permit. So that would be an example where to have that minor zoning, go to council the next day to allow the issuance of a building permit. So it tends to be those kinds of issues that we would look for, you know, bringing on to council the next day. Also, the last statement in the, if you will, the protocol is that any of these exceptions would have to be vetted first with the concurrence of the chair of planning. would it be have to be vetted first with the concurrence of the chair of planning committee, so that, you know, it would be significant enough that the chair would support it and recommend that to committee?
Is there the potential that that concurrence could also be with the Ward Counselors? Permission?
Your worship, yes, it could be in terms of that. We could take that step to be able to ensure that the Ward Counselor supports it going to council the next day.
I don't need to make a motion or ask for an undertaking on this one, but I guess I would be seeking that comfort, that the practice moving forward would be to consult with the Ward Counselor and seek their concurrence as well.
Well, I would argue, I think consult with the Ward Counselor is appropriate, but I don't think we want to give one member of council a veto over a particular item. So I fully agree with you that there should be proper consultation, formal consultation with the Counselor, and then the Counselor, him or herself at that committee meeting, can argue against the item being brought forward at the council meeting, but to simply not have the rest of council have a say, I think would be unfair.
That's a useful clarification, Mr. Mayor, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Okay, so direction to staff on that item?
Yes, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Leper. Does any, Counselor Fleury, I believe I saw your name? No? Okay. On page one, carried? Thank you. Page two, we've carried, page three, page four, item number 13, the council committee and commission calendar, meeting locations, and other committee member matters is outlined in the report. Counselor Deans has a motion seconded by Counselor McKinney. We'll put that on the floor, and then Counselor Brockington, do you have a question or a motion? Counselor Brockington, is it a question or a motion?
Regarding item 14?
Yes.
I'd like to debate this item.
Okay, well, we're going to do it because we have a motion right now, so Counselor Deans?
Table the motion?
Well, I think we have to table the motion first, we all know what it is, so it should be up on the screen, so this is moved by Counselor Deans, seconded by Counselor McKinney. Counselor Deans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just read the motion. Whereas the 2014 to 2018 council governance review recommends that the Community and Protective Services Committee, the Environment Committee, and the Transit Commission meet eight times a year, retaining the ability to hold special meetings, and whereas members of council wish to hear from the public prior to this change being implemented, therefore be it resolved that the recommendation that the Community and Protective Services Committee, the Environment Committee, and the Transit Commission meet eight times a year, retaining the ability to hold special meetings, as outlined on page 48 of the staff report, be referred to the first meetings of each of these committees commissioned for their consideration and recommendation to council, and to receive public delegations. Mr. Mayor, the reason I'm putting this forward is, I understand, I took a look at the rationale in the report, it makes quite a bit of sense to me that when you look at the work over the past term, it would seem that the work of these committees could be done in eight meetings. However, this is a new term, and we haven't really had a chance to evaluate the workload. Also, because governance came directly to council, the public hasn't had any opportunity to input into that decision. And it is clear to me that the opportunity for the public to speak and express their views happens at committees. And because this isn't time-sensitive, I don't see any reason why this shouldn't be referred to the standing committees for consideration by the new committee members, and to receive public delegations, and to hear from the public if they believe that constricting the number of these committee meetings to eight is too restrictive, and takes away their ability to input into Ottawa City Council and our business. So for all of those reasons, I'm asking council to agree to send these to the standing committees, hear public delegations, and to make a recommendation, and then council, having the benefit of that input, can make that decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Brockington, on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually wanting to debate item 14, but I have some notes on this item, so I'll speak to this as well. I certainly am sympathetic to the concerns raised by Counselor Deans on this item, particularly for the standing committees that will see a reduction, or propose a reduction, in their frequency of meetings, or the number of meetings per year. My concern is whether or not we are doing a disservice to other committees or advisory committees by not consulting with them as well, whether there would be others, other committees, members of committees, or other members of the public who follow other committees, who want to provide input, additional input, to what's being recommended today, and by, if we approve this motion, whether we are limiting others to provide their ability, or their ability to provide comments. So, again, I'm sympathetic to the concerns raised, I have no concerns with consulting these standing committees, but what are we expecting that consultation to, what are we expecting the output of that consultation to come to? And what are we going to do at the end of the day when it's likely folks from those committees are going to say, we'd like to have more meetings, we'd like to have an opportunity to maintain the status quo, and go from there? So we have to be cognizant of what the outcome could be there as well. But my main concern in speaking to this item, Mr. Mayor, is that we may be forgetting other components that would like to provide their opinion on this matter, on the matters before us today, and we're not doing that. So I'd like to hear if there are any others who have an opinion on this. Maybe we're fine with everything else that's being proposed, and we don't need to consult with other groups or other committee members, but that's just a concern that I have.
All right, thank you, Counselor Brockington. Counselor El Shantiri, please.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. My question to the Deputy Clerk, if I understand, this is what's going to go on a calendar, but also the chair of a committee could call a meeting at any time when we feel the need, that has not changed yet, has it?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. It actually, what aligning the meeting schedule with the workload we believe we'll do, is actually free up the rest of the calendar to give the opportunity to have special meetings. Anyone who's been a chair or a vice chair around this table will know that when there has been a need for a special meeting, the incredible crunch we've had with the calendar, and that often we simply end up overloading a committee agenda. So that was the intent, and in fact, it gives, because the calendar's freed up, it gives more ability to have special meetings for specific items of public interest.
One of the areas, Mr. Mayor, maybe we need to look at, is how could we advertise those special meetings? Because sometimes we hear, we didn't know there was a special meeting being held about certain item. Maybe if we can focus a little bit in the future, how we promote those special meetings, I think that would be helpful, but I'm glad this is still available for us, so thank you very much for clarifying.
All right, thank you, Counselor El Shantiri. Counselor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I mentioned you this morning, I think this is one of the areas where the public can have a say, it's not time-sensitive as some of the other parts of this motion are, and so I'm happy to see this coming forward. And the comment that was made about, you know, how are we going to know what the outcome is? We never know what the outcome is when the public consultation happens, we have the consultation, hear what people are saying, and then we can, we can either stay with the staff recommendation, or we can amend it, depending on whether or not we think that their valid concerns have been raised. And the second part of it has to do with the special meetings, because this may lead to more at certain times, and it's fallen through with Counselor El Shantiri's point. What is the timeframe for calling a special meeting? We've sometimes had them called with very little notice, even this meeting today was less than a week's notice. And whether we should have at least some guidelines, if they're not, obviously in an emergency, you may have to go faster, but there should be some guidelines, that it should be a week's notice at least, the same as a standing committee notice, and that we put onto the calendar where people go to look at agendas with the agenda, and just because a special meeting doesn't mean it shouldn't have the information that a regular meeting would have for the public a week ahead of time. I don't know if that requires anything in here, but it could be done by just how the staff operates, and I'd like to know your comment on that.
Mr. Mayor, the practice always has been, over the last 14 years of most of the committees and council, to provide at least seven days' notice, plus written documentation for special meetings. The procedure bylaw does provide for sort of those emergency or urgent special meetings, which can be called on six hours' notice, but other than the strike in 2008, Mr. Mayor, I don't recall those being used, usually it's seven days in advance.
But we didn't have seven days for this meeting, so, not the official notice. So I just want to make sure that we try to follow through, that we do give that notice, and that we give something out to the media or somewhere, that we can also, obviously, obviously, not so our own people, but to make sure the public knows that it's happening. Quite often, it's going to be because there's a heavy agenda. With the official plan, for example, we knew well ahead of time, and we'd let people know when those special meetings are, because I think the public has that right.
I think the clerk had one correction.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you did have seven days' notice of this, because you tabled this report on the 26th of November, and with regards to both...
We had seven days, but not the public.
Mr. Mayor, it went out that day, just to be clear, so the documentation was available, so was the notice?
It was on the website. Okay, thank you. Counselor Egli, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, in the, it's sort of a follow-up to Counselor El Shantiri's question, Deputy Clerk, there is a schedule, if you will, of meetings. Is there anything in the report that would preclude a chair or a committee deciding that they wanted to have a meeting in the evening, or on the weekend? Because we hear from people that they can't necessarily come during the day, so if a chair decided to test that theory, see what the public opinion would be, and what the traction would be, is there anything holding back if we approve this today?
Nothing, Counselor. Mr. Mayor, the chair would have that ability.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Egli. Counselor McKinney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to speak to this, it's, for me, this is as much about public engagement and public consultation with residents as anything else. I don't think that, I don't think that there's any harm in us going out to the public and asking them, and consulting with them, on what the priorities of the standing committee should be, and once we do that, we will know what our agendas will be. I'm just not sure how we can establish the heft of our agenda without knowing from the public, through us and council, what our priorities are, and then decide what, you know, what number of committees we may have to have. Easier to have 10, and then have to, you know, the odd time, if you have to cancel a meeting, because, you know, you don't want to make up an agenda, that's fine, but rather do that than not have the required amount of committee meetings. So I'd like to receive advice from citizens about the priorities, and I'd like to know that, to go from there and decide how many committee meetings that each of our standing committees should have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Taylor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I'm in support of Counselor Deans' motion. I don't, I think this is, to some degree, we're mixing up, you know, the concept of management, for those who have been committee chairs or vice chairs, with the concept of transparency. And so I'm certainly supportive of her point, that we can, we can put that argument to rest, and simply, you know, bring this forward. I would suggest, however, to staff that if it passes, if this motion passes today, that in preparation for those first meetings, it would be prudent for those members of the public who want to come out and speak to it, that staff prepare, as part of the presentation, an overview of that committee's normal course of business, so, you know, there's always a report that comes from the paramedics in this month, and there's always this report that comes back in that month, as well as the other, you know, kind of more hefty matters that come forward, so that the public who might want to come out and participate could get a sense of, well, what is the workload that would be carried over the eight meetings, so that they can evaluate if there's benefit to extending it to 10, or more. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Counselor Taylor. Counselor Moffett, please.
Thank you, I just want to speak really briefly to, well, I'll speak briefly to the motion first. As Vice Chair of the Environment Committee, I support the motion to have eight meetings a year, simply for the fact that we just, you just sometimes don't have the content to have a meeting every single month, and I realize that you can cancel meetings, the optics of canceling meetings, I can assure you, is not great, so I think Counselor Chernoschenko will know that, so we had this in the media a little bit about the canceling of the Environment Committee. But if we don't have agenda items, there's no point to meet, I don't think committees should just meet for the sake of meeting, it'd be like just having a conversation for the sake of conversation, what's the point? If we have some substance, then we can have a meeting, but five, 10-minute meetings is not democracy, it's not transparency. You should meet with substance, and if you have to call a special meeting because you have some substantive agenda item that's not being discussed at the time, then you do that. But I certainly don't buy the argument that, so we're lacking transparency because of the proposal. Really quickly, one of the items in item 13 here speaks to the location of ARAC meetings, the Agricultural Affairs Committee meetings. Every single year, we go out to the rural area, we have four meetings, one meeting in each ward. This report suggests that we stop doing that. And the rationale is simply that, you just look at the last meeting that we had in September in Navin, Bear Brook, in Vars, sorry, at Bear Brook Community Center, every single item on that agenda was not in Cumberland, it was not a Cumberland agenda. We had an item on Cranberry Creek from North Core, in which residents found out that they could be assessed a charge for a missable drain, they had to drive all the way to Vars from North Core. That's half the battle, because they get there, and they're upset that we made them come all the way to Vars to deal with an item that's in North Core. If we can have a central location for every meeting, out of fairness, it just makes it simpler. If you look at every single meeting that we've ever had in the rural area, majority of the items are not in the ward that we're hosting it in. So car presidents having to drive to Navin to deal with landfill zoning, or, you know, people in West Carlton having to come all the way to Osgood to talk about an issue that's imperative to West Carlton, we're creating our own problem, because as they get there, they're so frustrated they had to drive so far, that when they come to speak to us, they're already on edge. We need to make it easier for them. Now, at the same time, the chair has the ability to call a special meeting in any location that they want. So if we have a pressing item, for instance, in 2016, 2017, we're going to have a meeting on Phase Two of a development in Manetik with 700 units, which is a fairly substantial development in a village with 2,500 homes, we can have that meeting in Manetik, there's nothing stopping us from doing that. The plan is to do it that way, so that we have, we hold meetings, just like I was saying on the first, on the first issue, you have substantive meetings in locations where they matter. All other items can be dealt with in a central location. Even if a committee wanted to, they could even find, in the future, they could find a more central location, you could have ARAC meetings at Ben Franklin Place, as it's the center point of the city. I mean, we have this opportunity, and I think it's worthwhile supporting what we have in the governance reports, to not go to the standard meetings in the rural area, but have special meetings when they're called for. And again, they can get the call of the chair at any time that they wish, so I'd support the way that's written now.
Thank you, Counselor Moffett. Counselor Chernoschenko, please.
Thank you very much. I do support the motion from Counselors Deans and McKinney on this, even though I understand the logic for proposing a reduced number of meetings, and I certainly echo what we'd be hearing from Counselor Moffett, what we found for several committees was that the amount of work to be done, or items to be covered, didn't merit a meeting to be held, so the meeting was canceled, the perception of a meeting was canceled, oh no, another meeting was canceled, was hard to understand and explain. So really, the issue at play here today is as much about perception of openness and transparency as it is about the actual fact of that. So I like the idea that to prejudge the workload of committees based on last term, as opposed to waiting until the first meeting, as we start to get a better sense of that workload, can have that discussion with public delegations there, can allow them to express their concerns, give us suggestions about ways in which we can increase openness and consultation. I like the idea that we can actually make that decision there, the committee itself, as opposed to a trio or a group of committees doing that, all as one. As I said, it really is about perception. I like the idea of exploring other ways. We'll pick the Environment Committee as an example, where we may have people who feel that an issue needs airing, it hasn't had much attention yet, it wasn't on the term of council priorities, it may still not be, but we might explore a town hall, we might explore something that isn't actually a committee meeting, as a way to engage with those people who feel that council should be hearing their views or having that discussion. So I think that's the kind of debate and points of view we should hear at that first meeting, you know, when these committees make their decisions. So as I say, I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor Chernoschenko. Counselor Kakish, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just had a quick question for the clerk, is there a particular reason that only three of the standing committees are mentioned, and not the remaining ones?
These are the committees that have, less than 50% of their items are action items. These are the committees that have less than 50% of their items are action items. And in particular, with environment and transit, both of those mandates were merged into other committees in previous iterations and then separated out for the focus, even with the recognition that the workload may not be as full as, for a full 12-months meeting. And it was, the notion was it would improve government, governance by creating the focus of the mandate, but, and in fact, when you look at the statistics, that has borne out. There is not as much regular, not as many regular action items for those committees. So that is, that is, the notion is we would like to have the committee stats be where 50% and above of your committee meeting items are action items. And the hope there is that while we do have regular members of, you know, members of the public who come to our regular meetings even with information items, it's not common to have a lot of members of the public at most committee meetings. And hopefully, where you're getting committee meetings that have 50% action, 50% information, there will be some synergy there as well. So that is why those three committees.
Thank you. And I do believe that, at the end of the day, the workload of the committee should be up to the discretion of the chairs and the members of that committee. But what I'm also hearing from the deputy clerk is that the existing legislation in place allows that discretion to begin with, so making the motion not necessarily relevant. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Karkis. Counselor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Worship.
This is on, just to remind members, it's on the whole item, not just the Dean's McKinney motion.
Okay, thank you, Worship. I will be supporting the Dean's McKinney motion. And I'm supporting it for a couple of reasons. Number one, the experience of the previous term and the length of time that meetings took is not necessarily indicative of the norm. It's not the norm across Ontario and it's not the norm in the city of Ottawa. So to rely on that being the norm for this council in the upcoming term, I think, is premature. Secondly, with more discussion on more items occurring at committee, you're going to have a lengthened process at each of the existing meetings. And the non-action items can be handled summarily and just, you know, proved in bulk and dismissed, or they can be handled in a really effective way. And I point to Counselor Taylor on this, the way he would take status updates, reports to council, and present them to the public in a way that informed the public about what was happening inside the churning gears at City Hall and what was happening in terms of delivering results to residents. And I think people gained a better, sorry, a better understanding of City Hall and of its services. And I think that's an opportunity that we sometimes miss and we have an opportunity to not miss it anymore. And finally, one of the teachable moments from the last term was the Ogra World Audit. And we all came out of that saying that we need to do greater oversight, more oversight, not less. If there's a reducing amount of content on committee agendas, then we should take the opportunity to add some to it so that we do more oversight in each of these areas. Oversight is a primary responsibility of a member of council. And I think this is an opportunity to step that up a little bit.
Thank you, Counselor Shirelli. And Counselor Tierney, please.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I had a quick question about midterm governance review. Last term, it wasn't really mid, it was, you know, it was a little further down the line. We always have the opportunity of midterm governance review to review this item. If we don't feel it works, we can come back and make changes. I just want some kind of commitment. Do we have a schedule of when the midterm governance review will be?
Mr. Mayor, we would generally bring that towards Q3 or Q4 of 2016.
All right, great. And so I'm looking at this and I remember struggling with a lot of the meetings. And when you get through, you know, the summers, the holidays, the photo montages, the verbal updates, sometimes you're really wrestling with what's left of a meeting. So I will be supporting what's in the report. And hopefully, if there's adjustments required, hopefully, the chair will recognize that and make sure those meetings are added. Thank you.
Great. So we have a motion by Counselor Dean, seconded by Counselor McKinney, that would see these three particular committee meeting proposed schedules will go to the first meeting of the committees for any public input that we would have. On the motion, carried, one dissent. Okay, thank you. The next item is Counselor Moffett and El Shantiri with respect to rural development charges. So Counselor Moffett, if you would like to introduce this.
Yes, thank you.
Seconded by Counselor El Shantiri.
Yes, move by myself, seconded by Counselor El Shantiri. Whereas the Agricultural Affairs Committee is charged with planning matters in the rural areas but has no formal role with respect to development charges in their mandate. And whereas as part of the 2010 to 2014 Committee, Terms of Reference provided the Transit Commission with input into the transit-related portions of the Transportation Master Plan, while the Transportation Committee retained carriage of the TMP and this model worked well, therefore be resolved that staff be directed to prepare the draft Terms of Reference for Agricultural Affairs Committee and the Planning Committee. One, to provide the Agricultural Affairs Committee include the responsibility for the Agricultural Affairs Committee to review and make recommendations to Planning Committee and/or council as appropriate on issues pertaining to the Development Charges Act and on the general enactment of the Development Charges Bylaw as it relates to the rural area. And two, to provide Agricultural Affairs with the delegated authority to make recommendations to council respecting development charges, complaints respecting properties in the rural area.
So ultimately, if, you know, if members of council are uncomfortable about this being delegated to ARAQ, it's still, they all come back to full council in any event. Is that not correct, Mr. Moser?
Yes, Worship.
Okay. Okay, so on the motion, carried. Now, we go back to item 14. I'm just going to the ones first that we have motions and then we'll go back to ones that have been held. So Counselors Egli and Brockington ask that item 14 be held. Counselor Egli, you have a question on 14. This is the chairs and vice chairs be appointed for the term accounts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question to the clerk or deputy clerk. As I read the report, even though we would be appointing, if we approve this, for the full term, there still is a mechanism, or there will be a mechanism, if for some reason the chair is not performing or needs to be replaced or exchanged or whatever, there still will be ability to do that even if we pass this today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, midterm governance is always sort of that check-in on all such matters.
And so how would that, how would that work, Mr. Clerk?
As has been the past, passed long ago, councils, it would have to come from the members of the committee and we would take direction from there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Egli. Counselor Brockington, on the same matter.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. But I, to continue that thought, I don't want to have a midterm review just when it is necessary to remove a chair. I think it's very healthy in a four-year term, at the mid-year term, to have a review, maybe not as extensive as at the beginning of a term, but it's very important in a council of 24 individuals to have a review at the two-year mark to see if there is interest for new people to take on leadership roles, for existing chairs who may have been in the chair position for some time, to step out and let others take over. There may be councillors who are considering not running in a future election that they, at that point, want to step out and let others take on. But I think it's very healthy, Mr. Mayor, to have a reflection at the two-year mark, not because we want to remove someone from a chair or vice chair position because perhaps they're not as strong as they need to be, but really to have a second sober thought to get people into positions that maybe haven't had the opportunity yet. So I think, I think what I'm trying to propose here is we not accept the recommendation, we continue with status quo, we continue to have what we have. I also want to acknowledge that there are benefits to having a four-year, four-year term of a chair or vice chair. I understand it provides stability. I understand that training for certain positions to chair a meeting is not straightforward, it's not something you learn in a month, that the subject matter for some committees takes a while to fully get absorbed in and to have a good grasp. So I understand that there are benefits to having chairs for not just one or two years, but for a longer, a longer duration. So I understand that argument as well. But at the end of the day, I do believe what's best for a council of this size is at the midterm to have a review, a reflection. Like I said, not as extensive as what we're about to embark on this month, but just to go through those positions and inquire if there's interest in some change. So I'm arguing, Mr. Mayor, that we reject this recommendation, we vote against it, and we continue with status quo.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. So what I would recommend from a procedural point of view is that when we come to that item, you pull it and ask for yays and nays. Okay? Counselor Manette, si vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification from the clerk's office. What was the rationale for looking at going to keeping the chairs and vice chairs for four years?
Mr. Mayor, this is an issue that has been raised from time to time and it was raised in our discussions in governance. Unfortunately, there was no consensus among the members.
Okay. And as we move forward, I mean, obviously, there is a midterm review that will go on. The only thing that will not be looked at in the midterm review is replacing the chair or vice chairs unless, as you stated, there is issues with a certain committee. And I just want to touch on what you clarified as, and the members in the committee decide, what's the structure, like, you know, is it a majority of members that bring it forward that they want to look at a change and they have to give reasons for it? Or is it just a matter of a majority of councillors on committee decide that, yes, they want a change and they don't have to give reasons?
Mr. Mayor, there is a mechanism within the procedure bylaw which I will concede has never been followed by members of council because it's rather restrictive in what a committee can do with regards to their dissatisfaction for a chair. What I found through 25 years of practice is that most committees only want to have good chairs, no matter what happens at the end of the day, as long as they can chair a meeting. What we would usually do, Mr. Mayor, is we would facilitate the discussion to ensure that all voices were heard, and then we would look to the mayor's office, certainly to work with us at midterm, to look for a solution to any such issues.
Thank you. Personally, I support the keeping the chairs for the full term. I think consistency is very important and it's something that we should be looking at striving to achieve during this term of council. As far as issues with a chair, I'm quite pleased that there is a mechanism. If there is issues that the committee finds are not productive enough and they want to go in a different direction, they have the option at the midterm to deal with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Merci, Conseil Manette. Counselor-
Thank you, Conseil Manette. Counselor El Shantiri.
Item 17, I have a question for the deputy clerk. And I understand we will no longer be a member of the Ontario Good Road, but, so because we are considered to be a large municipality, we're part of FCM and other, but if council or staff choose to go to Ontario Good Road, the only difference is we will not receive the 20% discount if we are a member versus non-member. Is that correct?
And you would not be eligible to run for the board?
And you're not eligible to run for an office? Is that what you said?
For the board.
Okay. But we still be able to send our staff, if it's needed, to go to the Ontario Good Road? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dourous, please.
Your Worship, I would like to ask for additional clarification regarding item 17, the recommendation that the city withdraw its membership from Ogra. I understand it would produce an estimate saving for $31,000, but after reviewing their mandate, I wasn't able to find any specific indication that Ogra deals more specifically with larger municipalities. But perhaps those who have acted as the city representatives on Ogra would have more information to share. Thank you for providing some additional information on that.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so on page four, as amended, carried, page five, Counselor McKinney had a question with respect to item number 1E. Counselor McKinney, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my concern is with the elimination of the Community Services Advisory Committee. You know, as most people know, it was in 2012, we, you know, we reduced our advisory committees from 12 to five, and now we're being asked to reduce them further to four. So on the, on the, the Community Services Advisory Committee, I, you know, I understand that we have a new public engagement strategy and it's been successful and, you know, kudos to the department for, you know, for adopting it and working with groups and with, you know, stakeholders, you know. I know that staff now sit on various stakeholder committees and work with working groups, but, and that can be, that can be an effective way of engaging, you know, for groups to engage with city staff. But it is a still, I believe, can be a limited avenue for residents to provide direct advice to us, to councillors. And that was the, that was the original intent, I believe, of the advisory committees was to offer advice on, you know, major policy issues that staff were working on. So, you know, the community expertise on these, on these kinds of critical issues, I'm concerned, could be lost. And, you know, we are, we are limiting, again, our community voice in decision-making around social development issues. So what I would like to do is, is direct staff to report back to, say, CPS in 2015, in Q1 2015, on the public engagement strategy and the approach for each policy issue that will be undertaken by staff through direction from council. And let us know, tell us how this will be reflected in council reports. So, you know, I hope that this will include a requirement for a mandatory section on all staff reports on public engagement. I hope that it would include, you know, what process was used, whose voices were represented, and how did this process influence the report, so.
Okay, so that's a direction to staff, Mr. Kirkpatrick. I think Dr. Burry would take the lead on that. Great, thank you, Counselor Kenny. Counselor Taylor, please. On, anything on item one? We're at item E.
Yeah, I'm going to speak on E, your Worship, the elimination of the Community Services Advisory Committee. And certainly appreciate Counselor McKinney's direction to staff about reporting back on, you know, how the public engagement strategy is working. Bit of a difficult call for me when we went through this whole process, obviously, because the Community Services Advisory Committee did provide advice and guidance to Community Protective Services Committee. There was some concern revolving, and even when we had the final meeting of Community Services Advisory Committee, about the timelines and how their work and the things they would consider would be able to fold into the city's work. My, you know, my discussions with department staff and with the city clerk's office when this notion kind of came about was really aimed at, let's ensure that we still preserve a way to have community input that flows into the committee process, standing committee process. But let's try and refine it down even further, and I believe that's what the department is trying to do with its engagement strategy. The community services is an enormously large bucket of issues and items, everything from long-term care to childcare to social services, you name it. So having people who are more engaged, members of the public, who are more engaged in those, experiencing those items, whether they're the consumer of them, such as a parent who might be involved in their daycare, childcare modernization strategy, or a stakeholder, someone who delivers the services themselves, does provide, I think, a more- someone who delivers the services themselves, does provide, I think, a more effective mechanism of getting that feedback in. I think, again, we come back full circle to the transparency issue. Is it as transparent? Is the public as aware that that is taking place? Probably not. And so, you know, from a guidance to the department perspective, I would ask that Dr. Burry's staff look at how they can further publicize, further promote, and further engage a wider set of the public that these separate, that these separate engagement opportunities are taking place, and encourage people who are interested in being part of them to take part and how they can do so. So I would leave that with Dr. Burry's team for direction. But again, certainly hear councillor McKenney's point and would be supportive of hearing back from staff in 2015.
Great, thank you, councillor Taylor. Okay, with the concurrence of council, councillor Brockington was going to lift item 14, so can we go back to that with council's concurrence? Agreed for a recorded vote? Agreed. Okay, so we're going, councillor Brockington has asked that item 14 be put to a vote. So the recommendation is that chairs and vice chairs be appointed for the term of council. So if you support that, you would vote yea, and if you do not support that, you'd vote nay. So the roll call, please.
Councillor Chernyschenko?
No.
Councillor Egley?
Yes.
Councillor McKenney?
Yes.
Councillor Moffat?
Yes.
Councillor Middick?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Alshantiri?
Yes.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Fleury?
Oui.
Councillor Nussbaum?
No.
Councillor Blay?
Yes.
Councillor Kakush?
Yes.
Councillor Cloutier?
Oui.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Leper?
No.
Councillor Derruz? Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Manette?
Oui.
Councillor Cadri?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes. Just remind members, if you could push your button when you're voting, because members of the public cannot hear if your microphone is not on.
Nineteen ayes.
Okay, so that was defeated. Next, back to page five, other standing committee changes and dates. Councillor Shirelli has a motion, seconded by councillor Deans. Councillor Shirelli, if you could move your motion, please.
All right. Is it on the screen though? It isn't? Okay. This is, this relates to planning committee items and items before ARAC, and they're currently written in language that says the applicant applies for X, Y, and Z, the applicant seeks X, Y, and Z, and don't, they don't actually identify who the applicant is, which is fine to give the appearance of impartiality when dealing with the issue and non-bias when dealing with the issue, but in over half the times, cases, we do actually know who the applicant is, but in a significant number of cases, we do not. And our staff have to spend a lot of time digging out who the applicants are because we are required to meet the dictates of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and there's no way we can know whether we're in a conflict of interest if we don't even know who the applicant is. So, so the, the motion is to include the names of the applicant, well, it's right there, be resolved, it reports to planning in ARAC, with respect to applications made under the Planning Act and Ontario Heritage Act, include the name of the property owner and where the application is being made on behalf of someone other than the owner, that person's name, to enable members of council to meet their statutory obligations. And seconded by councillor Deans.
Great, thank you, councillor Shirelli. On this motion, councillor Alshantiri.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to ask Mr. O'Connor, because this, this motion, I'm not sure if it'll cross to the privacy issue with the, with the commissioner of the privacy in Ontario. Can you enlighten me a little bit where would be legal stand on this, on this motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, we had a look at it earlier, and we checked on the privacy issue, and there's no issue there, and quite frankly, my office is supportive of this motion.
So, well, thank you for that, but you mean to tell me if someone have Ontario 12345 company, they have to disclose who owned that company? Is that what you're telling me? Or they would only have to identify the company? Because I'm a little bit in gray area here.
No, Mr. Mayor, that would in fact be the legal title, and the property owner would be the corporation. I think what the council is asking for is that information to begin with.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Alshantiri. Councillor Blay on the motion.
Thank you very much. And just to build on what councillor Alshantiri was getting to, 12345 Ontario Inc., I don't think achieves what councillor, councillor Shirelli and councillor Deans are going for. So is there a way, perhaps in a friendly amendment, to modify it so that we have the parent company or the parent organization so that we know that, for example, Trim Road Inc., that we know that that is Regional Rupor Minto or whoever that might be?
With respect, Mr. Mayor, no. At law, a corporation is a legal person, and that would be the information that members of council would be entitled to. That's why we had no privacy issues with that.
Okay. Well, so I have no problem with the motion, I just don't think it'll achieve the desired effect if, because who knows who owns 798 Ontario Inc., right? It just.
Okay, thank you, councillor Blay.
Just put your mic on. So the question was, can the mover of the motion explain the purpose? Councillor Shirelli, please.
Well, the, the purpose is if we're dealing with, say, a site plan application on Nicholas Street, and we know the address, we don't know who owns it, we don't know who the applicant is, if, but we have to know who that is in order to be sure that we don't have a conflict of interest, or to be more comforted that we don't have a conflict of interest, even if we can't get 100% of the information. So getting more of the information is still better than none. And right now, the way it works, I have my staff spending a couple of hours every time an agenda comes out to track down who the owners are, who the applicant is, to make sure that I'm not in conflict. I presume most members of planning committee do the same thing, and it seems ridiculous that we know the name as it comes in on the application, we go through effort to remove that name to put in the report to committee, and then we have to go and find out who that name is in the first place. So to cut out a lot of duplication and allow us to, as best as we can, comply with our duties under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, this will ensure that we at least get the legal name of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Harder?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I am, I agree with councillor Alshantiri that, and I can tell you that I don't, I have a lot of applications, and I don't spend any time looking to see who is the applicant for it. Usually, the applicant, because of our rules, comes in and has a chat with us in the pre-application period, pre-consultation, just or at the beginning of it, just to tell us who they, who they are and what their goals are. So we have that already. I just don't think that whether or not you're declaring somebody on the lobbyist list if they come to see you, I think the onus on those people are, and what we've seen is that they have been very good at that, whether it is somebody who is coming in, whether it's somebody from any of the developers, or any of the people like from Hill and Oldman or whatever, they are all members of the lobbyists. So I don't, you know, it is kind of a feel-good kind of a motion, but I, it absolutely won't have any purpose. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so a motion by councillor Shirelli. Well, if you want to wrap up, I think you did wrap up by answering councillor Alshantiri, so it can be very brief.
Okay, I'll, I'll pass it.
Okay. So on, councillor Harder has asked for yays and nays on the Shirelli-Deans motion.
Councillor Chernyschenko?
Yes.
Councillor Egley?
Yes.
Councillor McKenney?
Yes.
Councillor Moffat?
Yes.
Councillor Middick?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Alshantiri?
No.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Fleury?
Oui.
Councillor Nussbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Blay?
Oui.
Councillor Kakush?
Yes.
Councillor Cloutier?
Oui.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Leper?
Yes.
Councillor Derruz?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Manette?
No.
Councillor Cadri?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Twenty-one ayes, three nays.
Great, that passes. The next item is item number one, other, under other standing committee changes and updates. Councillor Brockington and Kakush have a motion. Councillor Brockington, if you'd like to introduce your motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council have the proposed motion before them. This is to enshrine that the mayor consults with each member of council with respect to the members' individual budget priorities and concerns before. The mayor's office works with the city manager to develop the draft annual budgets. I don't believe this needs a lengthy introduction. And I recognize and appreciate the amount of consultation that the mayor and the mayor's office does already, but being the budget, and this is very important to me and all of us, no doubt, I want to see wording that, like I said, enshrines the process where all members of council have that opportunity to be heard by the mayor before he meets with the city manager. I think this is critical, to make sure that those priorities that are present in our wards and citywide are brought to the table as early as possible. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Great, and I concur with this, as councillor Brockington indicated, that was really part of the, the process ingrained in all of us, that we have that, that consultation, and happy to have it formalized. So on the motion, carried, adopted, merci. Next is councillor Leper, seconded by councillor Shirelli. Councillor Leper could introduce his motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, as a rookie councillor, I'm about three days into the job. On the process that has been recommended in the governance review with respect to the budget for the next four years, the governance review currently reads that each standing committee will work within the budgetary funding envelope allocated to the city departments under their mandate, and any increases to the budget will be funded by offsetting reductions. I have heard from numerous members of the committee, I have heard from colleagues, that this could have the, the consequence of federating council's ability to find offsetting, offsetting, offsetting money to pay for budget pressures in one department, that we would have a difficulty to react to some of the pressures that the departments identify at standing committee. What I'm hoping for is clarification that the committee of the whole will have the ability to find, where pressures are identified in one department, that there will be the ability to work across departments to find offsetting expenses in order to achieve the kinds of budget targets that we want. Thus, I've prepared a motion to ask for essentially a deferral of the budget until the, the following week as part of a whole budget package. That motion reads, whereas Part 1, Section C, Recommendation 1 of the 2014-18 Council, Governance Review recommends that council approve a budget process for the 2015-18 tax and rate-supported budgets, and whereas there has been a significant turnover on council, and while members recognize the need to establish the 2015 budget process and timetable so that a budget can be approved no later than the end of March 2015, it would also be beneficial for new members to have more time to understand what is being proposed and the implications of establishing a four-year process rather than focusing on the 2015 budget. Therefore, be it resolved that the budget process for the 2015-2018 tax and rate-supported budgets outlined in the 2014-18 Council Governance Review and set out for approval in Part 1, Section C, Recommendation 1, be referred to the Budget Directions Report such that it becomes a Budget Process Directions and Timetable Report. Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm willing to withdraw this motion if, after discussion, I hear that the committee of the whole will have the flexibility to find, to flexibly allocate expenses between different departments such that we're not federated for the next four years.
Great, so I can, I'll ask the treasurer to comment, but I can certainly confirm, because it was my original motion four years ago that brought that, that ability to, to bring some fiscal discipline to the process, that the motion is intended so that one committee doesn't poach dollars from another committee, but at committee of the whole, when the council meets in committee of the whole, that gives all members of council the flexibility to go into another department to offset a, a cut or to offset an increase. Can you confirm that, Mr. Clerk or Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's precisely the process, and as you've indicated, the procedure bylaw was actually amended to ensure that council had that increased flexibility while it's at as committee of the whole during the budget debates.
Great, thank you. Councillor Alshantiri? I don't know if councillor Leper is that satisfactory for you to withdraw, or do you want to have a vote on?
I would like to hear the, the questions from the other members as well, please.
Okay, councillor Alshantiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the fact that the new members would like to have a little bit more time, but we had this process after we failed in the past, when we have equal number of council work all weekends and offside and onsite and the bat team and all the other to find saving, and then we have another group of council to brought back the, the same amount of money. So we spent three days only to find out, one dig the hole and one fill it back in. And if we go back to this process, well, obviously, so one department can say, well, we want more of this and, and less of that, where we are now, been disciplined with our budget, so when I, when I receive recommendation from city council to a police budget, I'm working with that budget, and that's my budget to be able to work with that percentage council has asked us to, to deal with, rather than I can just get number of my colleague and say, well, let's go take it from transit or transportation or any other committee, and then we start taking from each other. So you go to my pocket, I go to yours. So really, I don't think that was a healthy process. We spend days and night trying to, and weeks sometimes to try to find the saving, only to come to this table, and we have equal number of colleague has the same idea, but to put it back all in. So I will not be supporting this motion, and I, I will encourage my colleague to withdraw this motion, and let's continue with the process, and we have time from now till the end of March, if that's the case, to get familiar with the budget. He has the right to ask the treasurer to meet with and get more familiar with any item he thinks should be added on, but then it has to be within that envelope. I don't think it will be fair to take from a rural committee versus the transportation committee or others. So I will not be supporting this, and I will encourage my colleague not to support this motion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, councillor. Councillor Chernyschenko, please.
Thank you. I completely understand what motivates this proposal, because I have myself raised concerns at several budgets and during several budget processes, that it really did feel like having one hand, maybe both hands tied behind my back, in the sense of the ability to move money, the ability to change priorities, and though I completely understand not wanting to go back to meetings till 3:00 in the morning and digging holes just to see them filled in again, there's probably a little more, we could certainly move a little more away from our pretty cut and dried, you know, here's the draft budget, we hope you like it, because you can't really change it, carried. I'm exaggerating only a little in that sense, but there really has been a sense over the past four years that, you know, we take out to public, I see nodding in the gallery. past four years that, you know, we take out, I see nodding in the gallery, I know they're not allowed to jirr heckle, so nodding's the best they can do. We would have our town halls where, I won't say I felt like a fraud, but I certainly didn't feel too good presenting a budget to people, knowing that my ability to make changes to it were going to be pretty limited. So I'm hearing in advance of this meeting that we always had more flexibility than they thought. That's nice to know now. I would have loved to have had someone share that with me over the last four years, and be that as it may. If in fact what we are hearing is that we are going to get more debate, more ability to review options, not just to move money within a committee, but, and within a department, but among departments, if a priority is identified, a new priority is identified, and the case is strongly made for it, that I would get cooperation as a counselor from staff, from mayor's office, from, you know, everyone who works on the budget, to explore ways to meet that new need and find that money potentially outside of that department, I wouldn't feel the need to support a deferral. Really, the deferral isn't about the deferral, it's about, in the end, are we locked in to a 2%, 2-point-whatever percent target, can't change it for four years? Are we going to be told that, nope, can't find money unless you find it from within the department or at that committee? That's what's caused me discomfort, and I've heard that from many people of the public at large. So that's the reassurance. Can I hear then a little more fulsome description of how, what our flexibility is, and if I misunderstood, for four years that I did not have that flexibility? I'd love to have that reassurance now.
Mr. Mayor, with regards to the, excuse me, the four-year target, the municipal act requires and mandates council every year to review your budget. So while we recommend setting the four-year targets, you must review your budgets on an annual basis, so that is required by statute. With regards to the earlier comments, Mr. Mayor, and perhaps just to be clear, there's a maxim in municipal law that says council is supreme. So we have built that into the procedure bylaw to ensure that during the committee of the whole process, council can do whatever it deems appropriate, a majority of council, to move money, quite frankly, from anywhere, to increase the budget, to do anything you need to do in order to meet whatever you believe at the end of the day is good for the city of Ottawa. So, Mr. Mayor, that is in the procedure bylaw.
All right, thank you. Counselor Nussbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too have concerns on this section, and they are threefold. And by way of introduction, I think it is important to state that, although I don't know very much at this stage, I do know that the budget is a very important piece of council business. The clerk and deputy clerk did a great job of orienting the new counselors over the last few weeks, and one of the things that they pointed out was that we have a statutory responsibility under Section 224 of the municipal act, and there are six enumerated functions, and arguably, three of them relate to the actual budget process. So there's no question that both in statute and in practice, the budget is a critical document. So that leads me to sort of three issues with this section. The first is timing. I see that we are going to be speaking about budget directions next week. So having this section here in the governance report does beg the question as to whether it more properly belongs in our discussion next week of the actual budget. The second issue is agreeing right now to a four-year process for the budget. Before, in my case, I've even experienced one, makes me uncomfortable. It may be that the approach set out is the right one, but it may not be. And I'm comforted by the clerk's suggestion that if it's not, and council wants to change it, I'm interpreting his remarks to mean that it would not be reconsideration if the council were to change the way to approach the budget following the first year, but it would be important to get that clarity from him. And lastly, I too zeroed in on the Standing Committee subparagraph on page 68 of the report, and the concern is as follows. If the Standing Committee hears from public delegations, and there is, let's say, a unanimous agreement among the public delegations present, that a particular area of city spending ought to be increased above and beyond whatever the budget target is, how would the Standing Committee reflect that in terms of its report to Committee of the Whole? Meaning, surely there needs to be a means by which the Standing Committee can say, hey, Committee of the Whole, we heard from 50 delegations, there was a strong, let's just assume for a moment, unanimous recommendation that this area of city spending be increased. I can appreciate that there needs to be trade-offs, but surely the Standing Committee must have the ability to articulate the fact that there is a pressure, that there is, let's say, a unanimous expression of support for increased spending, and it would then be the job of the Committee of the Whole to identify whether that pressure will be accepted, for which reductions will need to be found, or whether that pressure will not be accepted. And so the concern that I have, and maybe the clerk can clarify for me, is in the report from the Standing Committee to the Committee of the Whole, will there, under this process, be an opportunity for the committee to A, recommend increase in spending above and beyond whatever the budget increase cap is, and B, identify specific pressures for which that spending should take place? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on two of those points, first off, with regards to the counselor's understanding of the rules of procedure, he is correct. It would not be a reconsideration in the formal sense during Committee of the Whole process when council does its budget, because again, council is supreme, so the member has understood that correctly. With regards to the latter comments, this is a procedural nicety. What we do is ensure that if a committee, for example, in the past was very concerned about crossing guards and wanted to increase a certain amount of funding in the envelope but couldn't find it in its committee envelope, what it would do, and what it has done in the past, is refer a motion, and the motion would say the committee recommends. So it's a procedural nicety, you actually get to refer that to the Committee of the Whole, and they understand what the committee's approach is on that particular issue.
With that clarification, Mr. Mayor, it's not clear to me then what the language, and I'm looking now at the seventh, no, sixth bullet on page 68. When I read, each standing committee will work within the budgetary funding envelope allocated to the city departments under, it should read its mandate, and any increases to, should, and any increases to the budget will be funded by offsetting reductions. It's not clear to me how that language squares with the idea that a motion from that committee could propose increased spending for which there are not offsetting reductions.
Mr. Mayor, I will try this again, and I apologize for the confusion. You are using a procedural mechanism, so the motion to refer is not actually approval from the committee. The motion that you are referring, which says the committee recommends, will be dealt with at council in Committee of the Whole. So you are in complete compliance with your procedure bylaw and with the recommended approach set out in this report.
Mr. Mayor, just, so that means that the restriction of increases to the budget being offset by offsetting reductions is actually a restriction on the Committee of the Whole as opposed to the Standing Committee. Is that correct?
No, Mr. Mayor, as I've indicated previously, the Committee of the Whole, which is the Committee of the Whole of council, is free to move budgets anywhere, so there is no such restriction on it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Taylor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and certainly, I think when this came out as part of the governance renewal, I think it was very clear to many that we were going to hear from members of council with respect to their concerns about the ability to move budgets, to add money to areas, to fund priorities or things that they perceive as being priorities, without having to need to find offsetting reductions. I think the clerk has been clear, and certainly I understood in the last term of council, that there certainly was the ability, if it was the desire of council as a whole, to vote to go above a declared tax rate that we wanted to achieve in order to fund priorities. But I think it was a discipline factor, an internal discipline factor, rather than self-imposed, rather than statutorily imposed, that put us in a position where we attempted to work within the budgetary envelopes that we had. I would say that, you know, we did to some degree go through a consultation process just recently in municipal election. Certainly, one of the issues that I heard quite frequently was the concept of affordability in Ottawa. And interestingly enough, my ward is a very wide demographic swath, there's a range of incomes, there's a range of backgrounds, and almost to a person, there was an expression that there was a desire that city hall not just serve the needs of residents, but also live within some sense of fiscal restraint, that there couldn't be an unbridled just adding of dollars to the tax base. And so the process that we undertook last time, and certainly it was new to many, certainly new to me, being a first-time counselor, but I did see that there were opportunities for flexibility. In fact, I remember one specific case where the province of Ontario made a shift in terms of how it was funding some social services, and we were very deftly and easily able to, with the support of our committee and with the support of council, reallocate monies to address that pressure in a very short term, so that very real people didn't experience a negative impact in their daily lives. So the ability to move money around still exists. What we're talking about is the self-imposed fiscal restraint to avoid going and raiding someone else's kitty. And I will tell you, as the Chair of Community and Protective Services in the last term, the committee that oversees many things, including social services, I was comforted by the fact that we couldn't have another committee decide, let's take it out of the arts, let's take it out of social services, let's go raid that pot, rather than trying to work within our own pot to try and come up with it. There was still an opportunity to make that case if members of council wanted to do so, but they would have had to have made it a committee at the whole, rather than in a council room or a committee room with a smaller group. So I believe that the flexibility certainly still exists to serve the interests of members who wish to be able to move money around, and of course, the flexibility exists to go beyond any kind of stated budget cap, rate of inflation, 2%, whatever the case may be, if that's the will of council. But I think it is a good principle to start from, let's proceed from a point of affordability. What can residents afford? And it also allows us to frankly, put some pressure upon the city staff to work within the allowance that they're given to address our priorities. And we heard from Counselor Brockington earlier, talking about his direction, which the mayor supported, that the term of council priorities be introduced into the budget process with the consultation of each member of council. So we all have an opportunity to talk about what are our priorities for the term of council. If something is important to you in this upcoming term of council, it's your duty, it's all of our duty, to inform the mayor's office and to make that case at every committee and council meeting that we go to. We have the flexibility to move dollars around. All you need is the support of your colleagues to do that, but it does put you in a position where you've adopted a principled standpoint from the beginning, and you have to make a very good case in order to get your colleagues to move from their principled standpoint. So I think that I'm not supportive of Counselor Leeper's motion as it is here, and I do think, however, though, that his intent does exist. It really is just, if it wasn't evident in the last four years of council to some members, I'm not sure why, but it does exist. Thank you.
Thank you, right on time. Thank you. Counselor Cadre, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I do echo some of the comments that my colleague, Counsel Terri, has just made. First of all, in terms of the budget process, we're not changing the budget process. All we're doing is we're giving you a vision, a picture of what's ahead. And what that does, it gives certainty to, you know, everybody basically, in terms of the staff, in terms of their department, in terms of the Standing Committees, and in terms of the public, to where the city is headed and what the cost is of those programs going forward. In terms of the flexibility that's been spoken about this afternoon or this morning in terms of the council table, that flexibility, as Counsel Taylor just mentioned, does exist. Does it need a little bit of work in terms of you as a counselor member or me as a council member having to do that work? Yes, it does. That means that you have to show the rest of the committee and the rest of the council members that the projects that you're referring to or that you want done does hold that weight in terms of getting approval from your colleagues. Having said that, I do remember back in my first term on this council where an omnibus motion was put through, and this is coming back to Counsel El Shantiri's point about digging a hole and burying it. That's what happened in that motion. And that motion, to me, did not do the work that the council members are, you know, paid to and obligated to do, which is to look at each budget process properly and do their due diligence. In terms of the public, they still have that option available in terms of public meetings that we hold in each area of the city for the public to come out and express their concerns. Having heard those concerns, that's where the council member comes out of that meeting, working with the other colleagues and says, okay, here's a need that's identified in the community or in a neighborhood or in the parts of the city, that you can work with a particular department and their budget to go forward, whether it's a capital priority of yours or whether it's a capital priority of the community at large. And that, to me, still leaves the process open. So, Mr. Mayor, I am going to be supporting the staff's recommendation in the report. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Cadre. Counselor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the problems has been that there's been a perception with the public that we can't move from one to the other when we get back to council, and possibly the problem has been, I think this makes it clear in this report, that it does say clearly at standing committees, we can move from one envelope to another. We have to make it clear when we have our public consultations, that if there's something very, very urgent, do let us know about it, and if it's possible, it may be possible to switch things around. I know the treasurer's been very helpful. We do have a reserve that can be used if something untoward happens even during the year, and we had several cases this last year where we used money in that particular envelope to cover things which were not anticipated at the time of the budget. So if something is coming up that's very important, we don't want to just ignore it, and it is really important that you bring it forward at the public consultations, because whether it can be handled at that particular instance, or when we go into Committee of the Whole, whether we can find the ability to do this, switching around, which we usually ask the staff to assist us in doing that, because what you don't want to do is to take it from some area, and then suddenly you don't have the money to do what you need to do there. It used to be popular to take it out of roads, and now we're having huge expense in upgrading our roads because they were left to go too long without having the proper maintenance on them. So that's not the best operation of how you handle the finances of the city. So I think, Mr. Mayor, that having a general guideline is important, but having the knowledge that you can, once you get out of the committees, the committee have to work within their envelopes, because otherwise it does become really difficult, and it was crazy six years ago when we were trying to handle these things. The only way of describing it, it didn't work. The last four years, I may be a little bit more controlled than people would like to see, but we got it into a system that are now, are dealing with something which is manageable, and what we need to do is to make sure people realize that isn't a fixed thing, that you can't do things, and the changes we make, we don't have to suspend the rules to do them. It's quite clear in here, each year we just have to have majority votes to do things, and staff will, I think, confirm that. And from doing that, if there is something very important to a large segment of the population that we may not initially be aware of in dealing with the budget, because it's prepared months ahead of time, then it can be dealt with, and you should come forward, you should put those forward. And also, what it does, it puts it into the record, and as you're working through the next year, if it doesn't get in immediately, maybe it will get in later or in the next budget. So the information is still very valid from the public, and I hope we get more people coming out, because we haven't had a lot of people coming to those meetings the last few years, I think, thinking they couldn't make a difference, but I think they can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's it, Counselor? Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes, Anthony, thank you.
Okay, just shut your mic off, please. Thank you. Counselor Blay, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and certainly I do support the recommendation in the report. I found it odd that some counselors didn't know that we could move money around at Committee of the Whole, because we actually did it a couple times, I think with parse planners and crossing guards, and there were, I believe there are a couple other occasions. So it has worked in the past, and it, by going through this process, it ensures reason over passion. It's very easy to wake up in the morning and say, I need to pave that road with gold, or to get that extra crossing guard in that neighborhood, but we have to know where the money's going to come from, and we have to be able to afford it. And we've all made commitments to our residents to ensure affordability as our city continues to grow, and we have to responsibly balance those, the needs for, the needs of the community with that notion of... And we have to responsibly balance the needs of the community with that notion of affordability. So, certainly I support the recommendation in the governance report. And I would encourage members of council who see a gap in potentially their committee budget to identify that early enough, so that either the Treasurer or working with the Chairs and the various committee members can find the appropriate offsets, whether it's particularly in the committee that we're talking about. It may also be helpful, given that some, well, both the new councillors, but also some councillors who have been here, weren't aware of the exact process. It might be helpful to have a budget primer or some other session for members of council. I know we've done that in the past, but it might be helpful as we approach in the new year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Deans, councillor Leeper has indicated he's willing to withdraw it. Do you want to speak?
I just wanted to ask a question of clarification, if I can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask a question of clarification, because I'm a little bit confused. I harbored under the understanding for the last four years that we could not move money between budgets. And I think most of my colleagues around the table did too. So, what I'm hearing today is, yeah, that was always there. So, could somebody just remind me how council of 2010 to 2014 got the mistaken impression that we couldn't do that?
Mr. Mayor, with respect, I don't think we can answer how council had that misperception.
Well, let me ask you another question. Was there a ruling or something that said we couldn't?
Mr. Mayor, we could go back and review the tapes and review the documents if council is inclined to give us that direction.
Okay. But going forward, we're all clear that that can happen.
Mr. Mayor, as I've repeated before, I know the changes to the procedure bylaw specifically addressed the way council deals with matters in Committee of the Whole. And I believe at that point in time, that would have been where we had that specific discussion. So, yes, that is the case.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on councillor Deans' point, I think many of you will recall former councillor Blowis at Committee of the Whole moved a motion that I think $10 million be put into transit. And I ruled him out of order because he did not have a corresponding increase. But that was an example of a motion that was within order, because as the clerk has indicated, a Committee of the Whole, council is supreme to make those decisions. So, that flexibility is there. What we're getting into in years gone by was that one committee, you know, would just go over to another committee's responsibility and poach the money with no feedback from the other committee, which was fundamentally unfair. You know, you'd have one group that'd say, "Well, let's add more crossing guards. We'll take that from, you know, the tree planting budget and environment." Well, I think most people would realize that was unfair. And it also gave us that level of fiscal discipline, so that we didn't start a budget at zero and end up with 4.9%. So, I think it served us well. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, while I do welcome this discussion today, I think it's been very helpful for certainly me and some of my colleagues around the table. And I don't disagree that, you know, as councillors, we need to be good fiscal managers. But again, budgets are about setting priorities. And, you know, those are our priorities, whether they're in our ward or citywide. And I think what I'm hearing is that, you know, our discussion leading up to this has been that we want to have flexibility. We want to make sure that we are consulting with our residents and with citizens on what those priorities are. So, I would just, you know, I just want clarification on the, when we get to Committee of the Whole then, what is the role of delegations at Committee of the Whole? So, are we saying yes when we, after we've been through standing committees and we've had delegations, and then we go out to our wards for public meetings? When we get back to Committee of the Whole, where we're able to identify pressures and offsetting gaps to fill those pressures, what is the role then of public delegations at Committee of the Whole before we rise to council?
Mr. Mayor, the last council when they amended the procedure bylaw was clear, as it has been consistently since 2000, that there are no public delegations at Committee of the Whole for the budget purposes. The underlying rationale was that as a result of the tabling of the public budget, the four public consultation meetings, and then the individual standing committee reviews of the budget, which saw public delegations go to each and every one of them in some cases, that there was no need for a further public delegation at Committee of the Whole of council.
So, if we are looking at setting up a governance structure for the next four years that doesn't allow for public delegation at Committee of the Whole, where we're doing the real heavy lifting, I wonder maybe if that's something that we may want to defer to next week's budget directions. I think that it's, I think it is an important component, and maybe the missing piece that some members have been looking for.
Mr. Mayor, just in reply, with respect, I think now would be the time. If council is intent on amending its procedure bylaw with regards to its Committee of the Whole process, today would be the day to do that.
Okay, councillor, do you have a motion? Councillor McKenney?
Sorry, I don't have one prepared. I didn't know the answer to that question. I assume that there would be public delegation, so if I could have a minute to...
Yeah, if you want to draft something, just for point of clarification, though, I'm just thinking logistically how that would work, because during the course of Committee of the Whole, which usually lasts all day, there are motions back and forth. Members of the public would not know if a motion is going to be tabled on the floor, because as you know, at Committee of the Whole, you don't give notice. It's done right on the table. And would we have to stop after every motion to ask if anyone in the audience wanted to speak to that item? I think the onus is on individual members of council and the mayor to advise colleagues and the public if they have motions that they want to move. And they can certainly do that through a motion at committee referring that to Committee of the Whole, so the council would know that there's a motion coming from a committee.
Okay, okay, I'm fine with that.
Because I think otherwise, the logistics of that, the public wouldn't know if someone brings a motion forward at the last minute, which quite frankly is permissible under the rules.
Okay, okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that clarification. And I'm glad to have that discussion before us, because we learned in the last term where the heavy lifting should be. And the heavy lifting should be at the committees, where you have people that have sat around the table for the entire year, listening to the delegations, specifically in the areas that they have jurisdiction over, coming out, speaking to that, and then that committee making... And I might remind you that all of us, and in fact, most of us, attend all of those budget committee meetings, where the public comes out. We sit there, we can't vote at that, but we're sitting there listening to it. We all receive the correspondence. And then the committee that has been working on, whether it's transit, or whether it's transportation, et cetera, has been working on that file, takes that into consideration, and really brings it to the Committee of the Whole. We are far better served without having the public delegations at the Committee of the Whole. That's when we saw what that looked like. That looked like three weeks, okay? Now, maybe there would have been good reason to be there for three weeks if it changed anything. But the rules in Ontario state that we must have a balanced budget. And when you have a balanced budget, what happens is our Treasurer will say, Ms. Similak will say, "Well, folks, this morning we're $11 million in the hole." Okay, because we all put our wish list on, we had more people come out. They didn't in those days go to the committees where the expertise was. And so, she would say, "Well, we're $11 million in the hole. Two hours later, we asked for a roll call. Where are we now? Well, you've saved $200,000." And that's when you start bartering. And that's where the good stuff that potentially matters to a few people gets lost, where the popularity contest doesn't work so well. Because that's what also happens, Mr. Mayor, is that people start the horse trading, and it's like the Wild West all over again. And I can say that one of the very best things from the last term under your leadership, and I think that those of us who are here, and especially those of us that were not just here for the last term, but here for the previous shows that went on, it might have been good entertainment, but it wasn't good governance. And the system we have now works well. So, I encourage all of you to please support the staff report, but also to make note in your calendars of all the dates for all of those budget meetings. But you will want to attend. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much, councillor Harder. Councillor Leeper, please.
Mr. Mayor, and staff and colleagues, thank you very much. This has been a good discussion. I am much clearer, I have the assurance that I was looking for, that that flexibility, if we can use that as the watchword, is going to be present. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would withdraw my motion.
Okay, motion withdrawn. Thank you. On page five, as amended, carried. Page six, councillor Deans has a question with item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is under the Accountability and Transparency section, and I'm looking at number three, which is the public disclosure requirement for members' business travel, which I'm, of course, fine with. And it includes travel funded by the cities and boards, also fine with that. Where I have a question is the next piece that says, "As well as members' travel funded by external bodies." And I'm wondering if Mr. Marlowe could come to the table. I just wanted to ask him about this.
And we welcome the Integrity Commissioner.
Mr. Marlowe, I have absolutely no problem with public disclosure of members' travel, but I think that this piece has the potential to lead to double reporting, because in the case of members' travel funded by external bodies, there are members around the table that are on provincial bodies funded by provincial agencies, and the province already has their own public disclosure. So, if we were to disclose, effectively, it would be double disclosure or double reporting, and I think has the potential to lead to confusion in the public's mind about whether or not that was claimed twice, once by the city and once by the province. So, I'm just, I'm looking at this. You can tell me if I'm missing something, but I'm wondering if we should add the words where there is no other public disclosure.
Mr. Mayor, I think this is part of the council's expense policy disclosure provisions. And I think the intention was to have a one point of disclosure for travel expenses for councillors related to their duties. The councillor makes a good point, that there are organisations and provincial agencies particularly that have disclosure requirements, but it is not universal. Conservation authorities, other associations that councillors are called upon to participate from time to time do not have disclosure requirements as such. As to the double disclosure concept, I suppose I can admit that there might be an administrative burden there and possibility for confusion, but that could be easily cleared on the website by posting an asterisk to that particular monthly disclosure by a councillor, noting that it is also disclosed somewhere else, in order to prevent the perception maybe of double claiming expenses, once with the city or once with a particular organisation. So, it really is a matter of policy for council to decide.
So, councillor Deans, if you can maybe reflect in a motion, the Integrity Commissioner's comments, I'd be quite comfortable with the wording that includes an asterisk that links to the other publicly funded site.
So, okay, so maybe I'll ask the clerk to draft something, and we could come back to it.
I'm advised by the...
We can take it as direction, actually. This is just a process of how we do it.
I think that's a sensible solution.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Deans. So, direction, staff on that. Does anyone else have any other items? Or, sorry, we had agreed on everything else except number three we held. Was there anyone else had anything on item three on page six? So, on the page six as presented, carried. Page number seven, councillor Chernoshenko had asked that item number seven with respect to a value of gifts be held. Councillor Chernoshenko, please.
There we go, got the mic. I guess the point to start really would be to ask and understand where this recommendation comes from, what the perhaps baseline or benchmark to compare it against is. It was very recently, what, maybe 18 months or so, you can correct me on my exact date, that we adopted some of these policies. I myself have found them to work quite effectively. I fully understand that, I guess really for me, the $30 that we have right now seems, it's always going to be arbitrary, is it 25, is it 40, is it 50? At what point does a gift become big enough that you think you should be reporting it and justifying it? I felt that $30 is a comfortable point, at which anything less than that, it's a sandwich, a coffee, and a baseball cap at an event. Who needs to get into that level of detail? You start to get above that, it's a material object that you're quite happy to take home with you. It's a nice day out. It's a variety of things that you start to feel, influence starts to creep in, and the public perception that you're being influenced starts to creep in. So, back to my starting point, where does the pressure come to change a relatively new, fresh policy?
Mayor, I will begin, and the Integrity Commissioner can certainly supplement. Councillors, incumbent councillors may recall that this was an issue with the last councillor and we had council, and we discussed this. And the original recommendation back in 2012, I believe, was $200 based on the Integrity Commissioner's assessment of a variety of codes of conduct, and particularly the gifts provision in a variety of other municipalities. Members, correct, that was changed at, I believe, council or committee and then council to $30. We went back, the deputy and I, during the consensus process with members of council, reviewed this item, spoke to the Integrity Commissioner again, and believed that there was a consensus among members of council that it should be increased to $150. So, I don't know if the Integrity Commissioner has anything more to add.
I would add to, I certainly support what the clerk has just said. As a matter of fact, in my own consultations at the end of the last term, there seemed to be a consensus for councillors to review that. I was asked how I picked the $200 figure in my original recommendation, and that was that the median in the province, and particularly pegged it to the Ontario Legislature disclosure threshold. My specific concerns with the gift registry as it is now is that I feel that it captures a series of, with all due respect to councillors, trinkets of no great value in terms of influence. An embroidered ball cap now, I just bought a ball cap for my grandson at one of the red-black games, it's $39.95. And my office and your staff are in constant discussions about the value of a gift. A councillor's given a $29.95 book, it says on the back of the paperback that it's $29.95. Does that include GST or not GST? If you include GST, you're over $29.95. The same book, a chapter is online, is discounted by 25%. So, at $30, I think you're now capturing a lot of things that you declared, that if I'd been asked in advance, I would advise you not to declare. For instance, a ceremonial shovel marking the event of a major construction site, maybe worth $100 to buy and get it nickel-plated, but it clearly, in my view, does not have the intent to influence the councillor if he ends up with it as a gift to mark their contribution to a particular project. So, gifts are down. In the first part of your disclosure, there were about 20 gifts. From this, I exclude tickets. Tickets are staying at the same threshold level of $30. But there were 20 gifts disclosed in the first two quarters of the registry, and 39 in the first two quarters of the current year. I think that, 39 items, I'm sorry, but 12 gifts were disclosed. There seems to be a trend, both in the corporate world and the public world, now public life world, against gift giving as a practice. The issue of tickets remains, because we have a bit of a made-in-Ottawa formula here for tickets, and that is the largest amount of items that... tickets, and that is the largest amount of items that does get disclosed, and it's fairly easy to establish a threshold. It's usually the price on the ticket, or it's easily found on the website. But there are a lot of items that are now being disclosed, in my view, that I could easily interpret as being related to your municipal duties, and therefore not an attempt to influence or to peddle to your vote.
To ask the very specific question, then, while I can get that at the $30 level, it's very easy for $29.95 to become $34, et cetera, and who wants to quibble about that? It's really the perception of the leap from 30 to 150. How did we go from feeling that 30 was pretty good, but let's review it, to now having 150? I'm hearing from the public, we're reading about it already, that that's a pretty generous leap. Did we get that number from somewhere, or is it benchmarked against other municipalities? I feel it would be helpful to have some kind of comparison.
It was, the initial number that I provided to council of $200 18 months ago was benchmarked against municipalities, and again, this was benchmarked against municipalities. It ranges between 100 and 500. Hamilton's 100, Toronto's 500, Brampton is 150. So if you look at other municipalities in the province, it's between 100 and 200 as your median.
And really, in the end, this is a point at which we declare, we report, because it's already, there's nothing to prevent us from accepting something over $30 in value. It's that that's at the point that we start to declare it. So to me, it's the, do I feel comfortable in the public knowing that I went to a golf tournament or accepted a, you know, package of tickets to a festival that may happen to be a main economic generator in my community, or the golf tournament a charity with which, you know, that I have been supporting for many years and I feel does good work? We can still do that, but we'll continue to report. So in a sense, this $30 is, you know, we're picking up, hate to use the word arbitrary, but at a certain point, you've got to throw a dart at a bunch of numbers and say, "That's about right." And your contention is that $150 is about right for the point at which we start to report.
Correct. But I would add that in terms of integrity and transparency, you have another safeguard for the perception of influence, and is that the lobby bylaw prohibits those kinds of influences. As a matter of fact, I have another recommendation to that effect later on. And your own code of conduct prohibits you from accepting any kind of gift from a lobbyist or a client with an active file. That may be the most secure component of your integrity and accountability package. The other is a disclosure feature of what you might have been given as a gift above a certain threshold.
Thank you. That's a very important point to remind us of, because that is really the biggest issue for people, that on a one-off, I might have gone out, done something, attended an event, received a rare sweater from someone as a thank you for a very special project, that isn't so much the issue, as that I may have been golfing with someone who's going to be in here next week, asking us for an extra 30 stories. That's what it's about. So, this is helpful. I'd be interested to hear from clients. I don't want to play holier than anyone else. I'm glad to accept my trinkets occasionally as well, but I think it's very important for the public to know that, you know, at this level, you know, we consider it too high, too far.
All right. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Cadry, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Marlowe, just a question in terms of, and I think that's where Counsel Chernoschenko was headed, is in terms of the limit from 30 to 150, is that a practice across the other municipalities where they've got a limit of 150 or whatever that limit is? Is that where we're, you know, coming up with that limit? Or is that something that was just discussed based on the prices of gifts and concerns by councillors?
Your, Mr. Mayor, no. It is consistent with the practices in other municipalities, as I said. For instance, Hamilton has $100 disclosure threshold, Brampton 150, Toronto 500. Federally, it's 500, provincially, it's 200. So it is kind of in between the minimum. We were at the absolute minimum threshold at $30 in the province. Going to 150 is in between what's being done, let's say, in Hamilton and Toronto.
Thank you for that, Mr. Marlowe. And just one other question that somebody in the community has sort of put out on the media, in a sense, social media, is the fact that, you know, in terms of the gifts that are given to the mayor's office, for example, most of them are, some of them, not most, but some of them do become the property of the city. How would that affect the councillors at $150 gift? Would that be part of, when the councillor leaves the office, that gift becomes part of the city or part of the councillor's office? To be left behind?
As part of my duties as your Integrity Commissioner, I consult with councillors and the archivists for the city, and we make a determination together as to whether a particular gift given to a council is of historical or archival value, and it would be requested from that councillor to leave that with the city should it be determined.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marlowe.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Counsel Shirelli, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'll support the 150 determination. I think, you have to remember, four years ago, the sky was the limit. Okay. So nobody was receiving, or very few were receiving any significant gifts that I could remember. There was one incident when the senators met and made the Stanley Cup final, and there was some issue there, face value of a ticket being 80 bucks, and they were being scalped out on the street for a lot more. But I think 150 satisfies legitimate interest by people, and below that, it sort of isn't worth the administrative effort that occurs or the angst that it causes among community groups who may want to give protocol gifts and don't want to be insulted. On, I don't know if I'm permitted to speak to number six. I thought we could speak to the page if something was held on the page.
Yeah, I think maybe what we should do is stick to this one, because we already actually went through that, item six, when I asked for people, but we'll come back to that after we finish off on item number seven.
So we'll come back to six?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Counsel Cloutier, please.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor. I want to echo, je fais l'écho de ce que le conseil Shirelli vient dire.
I agree with Counsel Shirelli. I suppose that since all other policies establish for tickets, the $150 level is good, given what's done elsewhere in Ontario.
Prevents a councillor from, I imagine nothing prevents a councillor from putting as much as he or she wants on their disclosure report, whether it be above or below 150. Is that correct?
The council has not taken a firm position on this. I have. I discourage councillors from disclosing below a threshold. I believe it distorts the gift registry. People inevitably will compare one disclosure line with another disclosure line, and how come this particular, let's say you're all invited to one particular event, you all receive the ball cap, you disclose the ball cap, the others don't? In the eyes of the public, or whoever's looking at these, it looks like maybe the others chose not to disclose? So my strong advice to councillors, unless there's a particular reason, from an integrity standpoint, I discourage disclosure that is not required.
Merci, Monsieur Marlowe. So, thank you for that advice, and I would recommend the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I can confirm that you're correct on the $30 threshold for tickets.
Ce plafond ou ce plan? This threshold is maintained, yes.
Nusbaum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've listened carefully to the remarks made by other councillors on this issue. We've heard arguments for and against the status quo. It strikes me in this case that there is a classic Goldilocks solution. On the one hand, this gift registry was not intended to capture trinkets. The Integrity Commissioner has been clear on that. On the other hand, some councillors have expressed concern that a gift every year from a particular source, even if it is not an active lobbyist, may tweak a little bit our otherwise stellar reputation for transparency and accountability if it were, say, in the range of $140 or some amount close to the proposed maximum. So my idea, or the proposal, Mr. Mayor, is that we amend the current recommendation, and the proposal is, is that we strike $100 as the threshold. And I proposed that number for three reasons. First, it seems to be the best practice in the province of Ontario. The city of Waterloo has a $100 maximum per gift benefit from one source annually. I think the city has an excellent reputation for open government, transparency, and accountability. So why not aim for the best practice in this province? The second reason is campaign finance also treats $100 as an important threshold. We know that we have to declare the name of a donor, of someone who donates more than $100, so there is precedent for treating $100 as an important threshold, even though admittedly the two issues are slightly different. And the third reason, Mr. Mayor, is it's a nice round number. So I've actually drafted a motion, if at the appropriate time, we can put that to a vote. The motion is, be it resolved, that Part II, Recommendation 7, be amended such that the threshold for the full disclosure of all gifts, benefits, and hospitality received from one source in a calendar year be $100. Thank you.
Do you have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Sorry. Who is it? Counsel Nusbaum?
I think I've got a councillor.
Okay. So that's an amendment. Counsel Harder on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I find it interesting the amount of time we're taking on this, given the fact that our learned adviser has told us that the numbers have decreased quite remarkably. I can tell you that for all the people that haven't been around the table, I have never had one person ask me one question about this. So it's important that we are taking the time and we are doing our due diligence, but I would just caution you to not make a mountain out of a molehill. I would, in fact, if we were to go around the table and say, and I actually did, Counsel Monnet, myself, Counsel Wilkinson, Counsel Cadry, Counsel Al Shantiri, not one of us has had one question. Okay? So I think that we have a good system, we are accountable, we are making sure that we are doing our due diligence, and for anyone interested, it's there before them. I'll be supporting the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Brockington.
Mr. Mayor, I personally believe that every gift we receive should be declared, and I'm not going to propose any changes, I'm not proposing a sub-amendment or going to go against that, but it's about my level of comfort, and my level of comfort when a member of the community, a member of the business community, whether it's a gift for, whatever the reason is for giving the gift to a member of council, I'm expressing my level of comfort or discomfort in not reporting a gift. And we've heard from the Integrity Commissioner about there needs to be a threshold, and advises not to report below that threshold. But I'm a public official, and I believe that when a public official receives a gift, regardless of its value, regardless of its value, that I should be reporting that. And so I've listened to the Integrity Commissioner's comments about not wanting to distort the statistics and not wanting to distort statistics between councillors. All this to say, I support the amendment that's being proposed, or I support the motion that's being proposed, because it lowers the requirement from 150 per year to 100. I think that's definitely a step in the right direction and something I'm more comfortable with. So on that note, I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay. Thank you. So we have an amendment from Counsel Nusbaum, seconded by Counsel McKennie, and we'll deal with the amendment first. This is to, in essence, raise it from 30 to 100, or lower it from 150 to 100. Okay. So yays and nays on this. If you support Counsel Nusbaum's motion that it go to 100, you vote yes. If not, you vote no, and then we'll go to the staff recommendation of 150. I'm sorry? This is the only motion I have. Counsel Chernoschenko, are you, if you want to go back to 30, you'd vote against the 150. All right. So this is Counsel Nusbaum's motion, yays and nays.
Counsel Chernoschenko?
Yes.
Counsel Egli?
No.
Counsel McKennie?
Yes.
Counsel Moffett?
Yes.
Counsel Midic?
Negative.
Counsel Tierney?
No.
Counsel Al Shantiri?
Yes.
Counsel Deans?
No.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Counsel Nusbaum?
Yes.
Conseil Blais?
Oui.
Counsel Kakish?
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier?
Oui.
Counsel Hubley?
No.
Counsel Shirelli?
Oh.
Counsel Leeper?
Yes.
Counsel Darousse?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
No.
Counsel Brockington?
Yes.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
No.
Conseil Monnet?
Nope.
Counsel Cadry?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Fifteen yays, nine nays.
Okay. So that brings that down to 100, or up to 100, depending on your perspective. Counsel Shirelli had a question on item six, even though we've gone over that, so with the concurrence of counsel, to go back to that? Agreed? Counsel Shirelli?
Okay. To Mr. Marlowe, dealing with item six, we know the definition of conflict of interest is established by provincial statute, and we discussed last time the dangers of talking about, using that language, conflict of interest, to talk about things that are outside of that definition. And provincially, as it applies to municipalities, the definition of conflict of interest relates to monetary interest by the member that is manifested through either, through the line of succession, either spouse, children, or parents. So when we go beyond that, as we said last time, we have a risk of creating misconception about what the definition of conflict of interest is, but this one adds family members of a member's staff. My question here, I have a couple of questions here. One is, how do I know who my member's staff's family are, unless they bear the same name? Do I have to then ask staff what their familial connection is to everyone we deal with? And secondly, when we do things like put out flyers about public meetings and things like that, we have a great deal of difficulty getting people to do those jobs. We recently, we put an ad online, we had 75 people say that they wanted to come and deliver flyers for, I think it was $12 an hour, three showed up. And so what we tend to do is try to find family members who'd be interested in doing it, and usually they aren't. But how extreme is this going to be interpreted, and what will be covered and what won't be?
Mr. Mayor, on the last point, I would refer the councillor to the code of conduct, which has definitions to define child, parent, spouse.
Yeah.
And you may remember in the discussion... And you may remember in the discussion we had, going back to the development of the Code of Conduct, we stuck to the same definitions that are in the MCIA, so as to not to fall outside the existing legislation as concepts. Other Codes of Conduct have gone much further, but they're not anchored in legislation. So family would be, I would interpret, would be limited to those described in the code. As to the technical side of it, I'll defer to the deputy clerk.
Would this prevent us, because I don't see how it could, but would it prevent us from, sorry, from hiring a parent or sibling of a current staff member?
Mr. Mayor, this is actually, just to be clear, council has actually already approved this in the staff report. There was a cut-and-paste error in the policy that left out the last clause. So I just want to be clear about that. There is always the opportunity to seek an exemption. So for example, if there was a flyering, what we would do, the councillor would call and I'd, we would say something like, if it's ex-staffer's sister, make sure that ex-staffer is not processing the invoice. So we would provide you with the ability to ensure that there was some sort of a firewall to protect the council, to protect the office, and frankly, the individual getting paid and the family member. It's always better to ask in advance, get an exemption, we can put processes in place. This is literally a cut-and-paste error between the staff report and the policy that we're correcting now.
Okay.
That the policy council approved.
That's much better. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So on the page, as presented, page seven, carried, page eight, we've already dealt with, page nine, there's an amendment by councillor Shirelli Deans with respect to monthly reporting, as amended by the technical amendment. Councillor Shirelli, can you explain your motion, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, it basically would require the reporting to council of land purchases by the city every quarter, the details of those purchases, including any side deals or obligations. Those right now are reported at most every six months. The second part of it would require reporting to council of, sorry, of offers to purchase city property that were not, that were turned down. And because sometimes, as we try to conduct better oversight, we need to know why offers are turned down, as much as we need to know why, or the details of those that are accepted. So it's basically an oversight enhancement motion.
Okay, on the motion, carried, carried, dissent by councillor Harder. Next is page nine, I'm sorry, page nine, item number six, purchasing by law. Councillor Moffett had a question that I have recorded here.
Sir, it was actually Item Seven, the update on the roadside memorial sign program. I don't know if there's anyone actually here that can speak to that.
I think the deputy clerk can answer that, perhaps.
I think it's more probably Kevin Wiley, right?
I think she has the information that you may be after. Deputy clerk?
My apologies, Mayor. Unfortunately, the general manager couldn't be here. Essentially, what happened was the current general manager, Kevin Wiley, was in fact the person in charge of implementing this program.
Can you speak up, county, deputy clerk?
The, Kevin Wiley was in charge of implementing this program. In the interim, he got another job, and there's been some backfilling. So what they've told me is they're on track for something to be in place by the end of Q1.
No, I was, I guess if someone was here to ask, I was going to just try to figure out why it hasn't come sooner. I mean, the direction, the direction was nearly two years ago. So we just get, every now and then, we'll get some concern about these, and obviously, it's important to memorialize, you know, these tragic incidents, but certainly sometimes they can become more of a, more of a worrisome, I'm trying to think if it takes away some sightline issues sometimes, and we, I think, need to be addressed in a more formalized way. So I look forward to when it comes forward, which is fortunate it hasn't, it hasn't come forward before then, before now. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Moffett. Any other items? I'm sorry, councillor Egli.
I am now. This is-
Which item is this, councillor?
This is under the item number three, Mr. Mayor, delegation of authority.
Okay.
And the question is, I suppose, for someone from planning, and it's around the role of the councillor with the proposed changes in terms of Section 37 agreement negotiation and sign-off. I just want to clarify, Mr. Moser, that in fact, the councillor still has a significant role to play in the discussion around any Section 37 enhancements or agreements in their ward, and that they would, they would be consulted as to whether they agree or disagree on behalf of their ward before it went forward for final sign-off.
Your Worship, our current practice is certainly to look to the ward councillors and their community for, if you will, a list of benefits that would be, would be looked at for Section 37. We would involve the councillor in terms of, you know, having a review of what's going to be suggested for it. Staff would be bringing forward a report to planning committee, mostly would be planning committee, in terms of a recommendation for how the Section 37 benefits would be. So yes, it'd be involved, but in the end, if the councillor did not agree, it would be discussed at planning committee in terms of how it may be, you know, how the Section 37 benefits may eventually be decided.
No, and that's fair enough, Mr. Moser. Just what I'm trying to get at is, is what is the change that we're making here? What is being delegated to staff, planning staff, that wasn't there before? Because if you, on a superficial read, it sounds like you're now going to negotiate and sign off on the agreement. You're telling me that's not the case. So I'm trying to find out what the change is. What if we delegate it down to you?
My understanding is we were delegated down, once council has agreed to the Section 37 benefits, then we, as staff, could complete the process. Oh, just, you know-
Because council would have approved the benefit. But when you say complete the process, there's still an approval, but from your previous answer, there's still an approval that, again, if the ward councillor and the community doesn't agree, then it would go to a full planning committee for discussion, and the planning committee would vote on it, correct?
That's correct.
It wouldn't be staff signing off at the end of the day, because that's what they thought was best?
No, because anything, it's, we do the Section 37 in conjunction with a zoning by law amendment. So that, when we bring forward our report on the zoning, we would also be bringing part of that report, a recommended Section 37 benefit, that then will be discussed at committee, goes to council for its approval. After council has approved it, then there's an agreement that has to be signed, and staff would be looking for the delegate authority to be able to finish that paperwork, if you will.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Great, thank you, councillor. So on page nine, as amended, carried, page 10, councillor Egli had a question with respect to the deputy mayors.
Okay, with the clerk, and I'm satisfied, and my inquiry is answered. Thank you.
And then we'll go back to you, councillor Egli. You have a motion with respect to a 360 review by members vis-à-vis the city manager and auditor general. I'll ask you to introduce that, please, seconded by councillor Cadre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, both councillor Cadre and I sit on the Board of Health, and when we saw the, the report come forward with the recommendation, our initial thoughts were that, with all due respect to staff, that there could be a better way to incorporate more input from all of council to the performance reviews for the, for the city manager and for the auditor general. And so we looked at our experience with the Board of Health, and the Board of Health process, for those who are either new to council or haven't sat on the board, is a process whereby all members of the board are consulted in advance by way of a weighted survey, when they're asked on a variety of topics whether or not the incumbent, in this case, Dr. Levy, is meeting or not meeting expectations, where there's room for improvement, suggestions for professional growth, that sort of thing. And then the chair goes forward on behalf of the board and carries out the performance review, though armed with the input from all members of the, of the board. So we thought it would, it would make, it made good sense and was a logical extension to apply that process on a council-wide basis in dealing with the auditor general and the, and the city manager. It also requires for a report back after the performance review, so that the board, or in this case, council, would be made aware of the reaction of the incumbent to the suggestions made and to the overall grade, if you will, given in the performance review. As I said, it's a tried and shrewd method, it seems to work very well, and unlike what's set out in the staff report, it would allow all members of council to engage in the process without putting the incumbent in the uncomfortable situation of having to sit across the desks from 24 people and take questions or comments, which I don't think would be fair to the incumbent and wouldn't be a very efficient process. So that's, that's where the idea comes from. It was to engage all of, all council in the process in a fair and efficient manner, and I'd ask that my colleagues support it.
Yeah, I want to thank councillor Egli. I think it's a good, good idea on his part, and I certainly support it. Councillor Cloutier on this item?
On this item, just generally on the recommendation by staff, that the mayor be given delegated authority for the city manager and for the auditor general. Je ne peux pas objecter.
I have no objection for the mayor to have the responsibility for the performance review for the city manager, but for the auditor general, I think that it could be an issue. I think that this responsibility should remain with the auditing committee.
...of the audit committee to the new, to the new full, full standing committee. I believe that that's where the responsibility for performance review of the, of the auditor general belongs. It's a, it's a big responsibility. As stated in the document, in the governance document, the entire mandate of the, of the current standing, of the current audit committee will, will follow it as it becomes a full standing committee. And in that, the mayor is an ex officio member, the, it is mandated to conduct performance appraisals, and it confirms the independence, the independence of the auditor general. The mayor, as, under Section 225, as CEO, the head of council, and the head of the corporation, certainly his office is, is an administrative office, but is also a very political office. And real or perceived influence by the mayor's office in the performance review of the auditor general, I think, would not be appropriate. While it might be efficient and effective from a management point of view in the fishbowl that we operate, I think it could, it might be subject of, of a perception, just a perception of undue influence that we don't want to get into. Certainly, the auditor general will be looking at a myriad of things. Certainly, the LRT, a $2.1 billion project in the next couple of years, and the mayor is closely aligned to that. So how he performs those duties cannot be seen to be influenced by the mayor's office. As I said, it might be efficient and good management, but I just don't think it's a good political position for the mayor to be in, to be seen as conducting the performance review of an office that will be, that will be conducting a review of his office or of any of our offices. So I would ask my, while I don't have a motion, I would ask my council colleagues to keep that, to keep that in mind as we vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The process that councillor Egli suggested is also followed auto-community housing, but we actually take it one step further, as well as all of the board putting in their comments. They also had all the senior management staff put comments, and all done confidentially, of course, but it does, it does help the people, the group, which I hope will be that small group that the next motion will do, when they're putting it all together, to have a feeling, not only from what we as councillors look at, but the senior management deal with them all the time. And if they can confidentially put comments in, it would be helpful, both for the people doing that reporting and the, and in fact, for the person being evaluated as well, because you do get a different perspective on it. I can provide that information, what we do there to you, is I do it, it's done through one of our committees, but it's all done extremely confidentially. It was very, very, very useful a result, but really, I think, helped our new CEO as well as the members of the board to understand how senior management thought about it, because it helped us, we didn't know who said what, of course, because it all kept confidential. But I think that's a very good process, and I'll provide you with that information. You can consider whether you'd like to add that to it as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Cadre, please, who's seconding the motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and just coming back to councillor Egli's comments, in terms of the process that he described, it's already existed, and it is already practiced, and most of the boards are with the city. And that is one of the main reasons I supported the motion, because I think it makes sense, because it's already practiced, and it has been very successful, and has, you know, provided the results that puts people like Dr. Levy and other board chairs, or executive members of the board, to say, look, I am being looked at, my performance review is there, and it takes the onus away from one person like yourself, Mr. Mayor, and it puts it on the entire council to do that, coming back to the recommendations of the motion. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So on councillor Egli's motion with respect to the 360, carried. The next item on the same topic is councillor Rick Shirelli, seconded by councillor El Shantiri. And this is to formalize the process that was used last time. Councillor Shirelli.
Yes, and that, in dealing with the PA and other matters, dealing with the auditor general, it basically has the mayor and the chair and the vice chair of audit be given delegated authority to conduct the performance reviews. And, hmm? Okay, apparently I have to do that over. Okay, it, it turns to the mayor and the chair and vice chair of audit committee to be given delegated authority to conduct performance reviews of the AG, and that the mayor be delegated authority to approve vacation leave, sick leave, expense reports, et cetera. So it basically can stand side by side with councillor Egli's motion, and will give better perception to the public that all of council is participating in this, and it just clarifies the consultation that has happened to this point. And it also forces it to actually happen, which is important.
Very good point, thank you. Councillor El Shantiri, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this practice, we have done it in the last term, Mr. Mayor, and also we still do on the Police Service Board, as you know, we review the performance of the chief and the deputies, and then the chair and the vice chair will be, delegate the authority to inform the chief of that performance. So there's nothing new here, we did it the last time, because council did delegate the authority to the mayor and to the deputy mayor, we just ask them this time to be in a, in a governing report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would ask my colleagues to support this.
Great, thank you, councillor. Councillor Fleury, conseil Fleury?
Looking for clarity, on the previous motion, we established a process by which we'd give feedback, and then there'd be, and how does that refer to this motion? Is this motion overseeing the AG's review?
I think what this is doing, councillor, do you want to, what this is doing is formalizing what was the process last time by, by having the two deputy mayors engaged as well.
Okay.
Right. Councillor Harder, please.
Just my, more than two cents, I guess it's five cents, the rate of inflation probably allows that. I just wanted to say that in this case, because the, both of them report to council as-
I just wanted to say that in this case, because the, both of them report to council as a whole, I think it's important that the people that are working with you, and so I'm going to be supporting this motion, are people with a citywide mandate. And I think the deputy mayors have, in assuming that role and accepting those roles, they too have a citywide mandate. And I think that, you know, that is, makes the logic very clear on why they should be added to your responsibility. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? So on Counselor Shirelli's motion, seconded by Counselor El Shantiri, carried. On page 10 is amended, carried. Page 11, Counselor Shirelli has a motion, seconded by Counselor Hubley, that I believe members have, and I'd ask Counselor Shirelli to introduce the motion, please.
Basically, is therefore be resolved in reports to be submitted quarterly to finance and economic development committee respecting disposition of real estate, oh, I mean the wrong one. Sorry. Therefore be resolved that part five, recommendation seven be amended such that section 12, one of bylaw 2009, 323 include a provision that states that in an election year timelines for the auditor general's annual report will be determined by the auditor general in consultation with the mayor and the chair of the audit committee and may be tabled after December 31st to the next year following the tabling of the audit plan. This, I think by having formalized that more than one person is involved in that decision or more than one person in addition to the auditor generals involved in that decision, we remove the perception that there could be any undue political considerations being taken into the timing of the audit release. Secondly, we deal with the fact that during an election period, things happen that prevent the normal course of, of activity from occurring at city hall. So I just think it deals with the practicality that will come to council in its routine handling of the release of audits, while at the same time maintaining the perception that it's open, transparent and more than the two people are involved.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that's good advice, Counselor. On the motion, carried. Next is nomination committee, Counselor Harder, seconded by Counselor Flurry. You could read the motion, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Therefore be resolved that council approve the appointment of 11 members of council to serve as the nominating committee in addition to members of council, to standing committees, subcommittees, to make recommendations to council on appointments of members of council to standing committees, subcommittees, boards and the selection panels. The first meeting of the nominating committee is scheduled for 9:30 Tuesday, December 9th, for consideration at the city council meeting on December the 10th, Wednesday next week. So added to yourself, be it further resolved, Mr. Mayor, that the members of the nominating committee will be Counselor Bob Manette, I'll just say counselors, counselors Bob Manette, Jody Medick, Jan Harder, Keith Egli, Chad Cadre, Jean Cloutier, Diane Deans, Matthew Flurry, Catherine McKenney, David Chernichenko and Scott Moffett.
Questions on the motion, carried. Now, the, we have to, according to the clerk, approve the motion as amended in its entirety. So on the main report as amended, carried. Motion to adopt reports, motion important adoption of report, Counselor Shirelli, please, seconded by Counselor Flurry.
Thank you, your worship. Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Flurry, that the report from City Clerk and Solicitor entitled 2014 to 2018 Council Governance Review be received and adopted as amended.
Carried, adopté. Merci.
Thank you.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Flurry, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of council meeting of the 3rd of December 2014.
Carried, adopté. Received one written inquiry. Counselor Egli, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the inquiry is related to minutes of meetings and it's, can staff please provide information with respect to what would be required for city council to return to the practice, a synopsis minutes for standing committee, the transit commission and subcommittees? Please include all relevant details about staffing costs, translation costs and any impact on timelines. As it is recognized that this is a significant inquiry, but staff have advised that they can accomplish this within the existing resources, a response is requested before the end of Q1 2015.
Can I have a, can I suggest a friendly amendment? Is that in order, Mr. Mayor?
Well, maybe I can hear you out on what the inquiry is. Is it an add-on to Counselor Egli's inquiry?
It is.
Okay. What would it be?
And he, he and I did have a discussion. And just for clarity, the reason, when we moved away from this, we went because we were going, we have a sire system, we have a better website, it's still not a great website, but could we have that information come back on really? How do we give people better access to the information we're gathering through the new program? I would like the option being better, better availability and clear availability on the website to be part of that work that comes back.
Okay, so staff have heard that, Mr. Clerk.
What's planned going forward for the website? If we stay with the current system, that, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. German, Counselor Shirelli, please.
By myself, seconded by Counselor Flurry, that the proceedings of the city council meeting of December 3rd, 2014 be adjourned.
Carried, carried. Thank you all very much. Merci beaucoup. Meeting adjourned.